I'll be. I'll call the regular Bridgeway Town Council meeting Wednesday, August 20, August 14th, 2024. Order. Ask for a roll call please.
Councillors Bramley.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Rayken.
Here.
Skyler.
Here.
Scoville.
Here.
Mayor Per Tenmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Thanks everybody for being here. We've got a much bigger crowd than we usually do. I know we have several things on the agenda of interest, so. I hope you can be patient with us as we go through the agenda. It's a long one. Most of you will be out of here within an hour or so. We'll be here much longer than. But to push item on the agenda, is there any additions or revisions?
I have none.
Okay. On induction, the consent account or anything on there? Anybody wants to pull up or to motion approval?
No move. Second.
Motion made by Collins, seconded by Beth. A roll call vote please. Please, Russell's. Vote.
Councillors Bramley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Rayken.
I am Skyler.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Mayor Per Tenmeyer.
Aye.
Thanks. The message unanimously. That brings us to public comments. This is established time on the agenda. To address council regarding any item that is not otherwise on the agenda. Does anybody have anything? First, we've got him first.
No, I'll have her go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ladies first.
Hillary isn't dead.
Sorry, I'm not done. Well, thank you, councillors. My name is Renee Marr and I am here on behalf of the LaRanche HOA President Jeff Crystal, who is traveling in Europe with respect to a project currently under construction at 432 Amy Court in the LaRanche subdivision. Our subdivision has an HOA and requires HOA approval for all new construction. A house is currently being built without any HOA approvals. The HOA president asked me to be here tonight to follow up with you. Here's his email and I quote. "Please go to council and explain the situation. I had a long phone discussion with Beau Nerl and the town attorney. We hired him to dissolve the HOA. He was absolutely aware that the HOA is still in existence. Explain that the HOA is liable and the town is liable and we have requested a stop of all construction. And I was told that was granted and further construction would cease until HOA approval was given. The construction remains ongoing. In fact, the first subfloor was installed today. We alerted the building department on July 9th that no HOA approval had been given. Two weeks later, on July 25th pursuant to a records request, we asked for all documents relating to the project. Notably, no HOA approvals were in the provided documents. However, on the July 16th building permit checklist under HOA approval, it was noted that the building official and town manager verified the proper HOA approval had been provided and verified, which was different than the building checklist issued just a month prior acknowledging HOA approval was not provided. We ask you as town council to either provide said HOA approval or honor the HOA president's requests and halt all construction until the HOA can review and approve the project. Thank you for your time."
Yes, thank you. This is kind of a administrative thing, I'm guessing. Preston, you want to?
Yeah, we talked a little bit certainly administrative and we've been down staff and Beau as well. Proudly intended to their request for information and the issue and. And we'll continue to do so. I don't think this is a forum to debate. But town staff again has been extended and have looked into this at length based on requests that have been made, based on the facts. And there may be more to come, but that may just depend on what's submitted.
And if I can make a point to disagree with that, we asked for understanding of how zoning and hire requirements were interpreted differently and how the HOA, how it could be being built without any HOA approval, even broke ground before the first building permit was even issued. And we were told across the board that Mike, Preston, TJ and Beau have decided that it's fine and it was good to go. However, our HOA president keeps on saying, I'm in Europe, there's not much I can do, but I've had significant phone conversations, been promised that the construction was halted. And today they put up, they did back the last week, they put subflooring and so construction is ongoing. So there's a disconnect somewhere. When we talk to the town, they say that's it. I asked if I could appeal and he said I would have to pay a fee to appeal even though I'm not the applicant. And the HOA isn't ready to do that. So we're bringing it to you as town council because you have the authority to look into this and either provide us the documents that are requested, which is HOA approval, or look into why it was not given and why construction was allowed to be given without HOA or the ACC approval for the subdivision.
I think about the only thing we can do here tonight is direct staff and Beau to put together a report on the side of the story basically and explain why they acted the way they did and provide that to us so that we can give that feedback to you.
Okay. And can you possibly forward the email you just read to Preston so you can distribute it to us so that we have both pieces of it?
Yeah.
Sustained for us.
Because some of us process way better reviews.
Usually, yeah.
Yeah, if you could forward that to Preston, he will send it to all of us. And then we'll have that to review when we see what the town says has been done or not.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Renee.
Thanks for coming. Next.
I should have gone first. I'm not as organized, sir. My name is Dan McAllister. I live here in town. I have two ADUs in a house that I live in. And one of the rentals got backed out of me at the last minute. And so this was just before the first of August and I thought, well, it's short term. So I went down to the city and hadn't done this, hadn't short-term for a while. So I went down to the city and I asked about it and found out that it's a $400 fee for me plus another $3,600 for an impact fee. So I started thinking about that. That was a Friday, went home, came back on Monday with my application. And the lady that took my application said, looked really organized, did a really good job. So. So we turned that in on a Monday. Went back on that Thursday, because the last time I did this, it went really quick. Went back on a Thursday and they informed me that he was going to be out of town on vacation until Monday. I said, is there anybody else that can take care of it? And they said, no, not unless there's a city planner. I said, okay. So then I came back on Monday. They informed me he was going to be out until Wednesday on vacation. So I said, well, I said, can I withdraw my application? And they said, yeah, but they couldn't find my checks. So I said to the lady, and I'm not going to say any names here, but I think ladies now have to do a good job. But so I simply, I said, we can solve this problem really. I said, I'm just trying to get this thing on Airbnb. So I make a little money for Rondin. And I was only going to try and short-term this until the first November, then long-term. And she said, well, that's, we should, you should be able to list it. So I said, well, if I can list it, that solves all the problems. He can sign it when we get back. Because I had Airbnb before and Mike Gill had looked at it before. So I got home, my wife is the computer girl, so she did, she had it already and she was, she put it on and I got a phone call. Said, you can't do that. That's not kosher. Okay. So then I waited, he got back in town and I went into his office. And I was informed at that point that it'd be at least another week and maybe two more weeks before I could get a short-term application. So I was a little frustrated because I kept hearing from the city, you know, we're just a small town. And this is the only staff we have and I understand. But then I got on my bike and I ride around town and I see like $40 million worth of projects floating in this town. And I see a $4,000 fee to get a short-term rental. So you can tell me it's a small town, but those two things right there tell me it's not as small as you think. So then my wife had been telling me about things she'd been reading online about these, these businesses that are having trouble making a go of it. So I rode my bike over to one of these businesses and I started talking to the lady. And I found out from her, and I'm going to tell you, but besides her, two people on this council also said something similar to me. And that is that the landlords in this town were being blamed for the high rents. I'm not going to get into what it's like to be a landlord, short and long term. But I can tell you this, that I've got a mortgage on each place. You can look it up online. And one of the rentals I have, I'm losing 200 a month with a 3% mortgage. So I really don't want to hear any of that from the council. There's one other thing I want to touch on. I'm not expecting to get anything solved tonight. There's one other thing I want to touch on. Because I built two houses here, I've remodeled, I've remodeled the condo and I remodeled the house here. I'm pretty familiar with what goes on this time. And I'll tell you what I'm getting tired of. I'm getting tired of this good old boy nepotism thing. And I think you all know what I'm talking about. I get example after example, neighbor after neighbor, but I'm not going to name people. I've come down here twice trying to get a little gravel put up on my driveways for my tenants that complained to me. And I couldn't get it done, but yet I can see that back will go by under the bucket of stone for somebody else. I'm not going to get into all the details of this, but I would really like this favoritism to stop in this town. And the only way I can find out the truth about what's going on with applications would be use of Freedom of Information Act. And I really don't want to mess with it. So I'm just long-terming it again. I'm in here trying to get my point across and I'm also here to support this, these businesses that are having trouble. And that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Krista Arnold. I live on North Cora and I just, I saw on the agenda today that there was an item regarding snow removal regulations and I won't speak to that, but it reminded me that this spring I spoke to the town council about accessibility issues in the winter time. I was on crutches this winter. I had knee surgery and I was a pretty mobile person on crutches and it was hard for me to get around. But in relation to that, I've been riding my bike back and forth to PT down at Montrose View. And I, in riding there, twice a week for the last year almost, I've noticed that the bike lanes are full of gravel and dirt. And in an effort to improve accessibility in this town, I know there's a lot of things we're dealing with right now, but then like that causes me to ride on the sidewalk and makes it worse for people that I try to walk or push strollers or use their motorized scooters. I just wonder if there's something we can do there as well. So, yeah.
You can be assured that as a bike rider, rides all over town all the time, is one of the things I'm asking for all the time. Reality is, it's been, they've probably been swept at least once, if not twice, maybe three times.
I think five times or so.
So the problem is just that the gravel just is present and big trucks and everything, it's constantly being spread again. Probably partly because we have dirt streets feeding pavement and so that people coming off the dirt streets and accelerating pull gravel onto the highway and that gets pulled down the highway in rain. I mean, that's, I'm not making excuses, but we have been trying to sweep the bike lanes, bike lanes as much as possible and we will continue to do so. So appreciate the comment.
Yeah, just in an effort to feel we can do to help all people being accessible.
Being more accessible for multi-motors.
Yeah.
That actually raises a question that I had. We discussed at one point, a particular property owner in town, it suggests they're going to pave a parking lot. And you can actually see the flow of gravel coming out of that parking lot. And we have been procrastinating during the valley pan until that gets paved. Does town have any ability or seat on, if, if you actually have like, you can see the erosion through that, that particular parking lot? So then lean on them to, to do anything? Do you know, I, do you know what I'm talking?
I know what you're going, but I doubt we have any, as far as the property side, I guess we should. We can do whatever and continue to ask.
Spewing gravel into the highway.
Just continue to have conversations with them.
Okay.
Thanks, Krista.
Yeah, thank you all, Chris.
Anybody else? Public comments. Jim? This came out of when I was at P and Z this last month and this is, I'll be in front of you guys for next month with a re-subdivision approval. But what came out of it was, it was interesting that when I talked to TJ and we were just in a discussion and he, and I had purchased dark sky approved lights for my house and the ADU and was going to do all that before I sold them. Okay? And then he immediately said, oh, well, those lights are already grandfathered in. You don't have to do anything. And I thought that there could be something from TJ where he encouraged people to do that instead of immediately saying that it was grandfathered in. But the other thing is, given that we're a dark sky community, I don't see why the town couldn't put some teeth in that. When someone's going to sell a property, that they need to comply that all their exterior lights are dark sky compliant and have that as a requirement before they're able to sell. You know, we've got a lot of, everything new theoretically gets dark sky lights, but we've got a ton of properties to catch up. And I just thought that'd be a way to put a little teeth in the code. That's a good idea. And I actually, you know, we had something like that. So I see Preston making notes, I think.
Yeah, well, the dark sky regs contemplate the mechanism for updating lighting pictures and such, major retrofits and stuff like that, but not, not on major sales. So that would, that would take authentication, you know, more than to change that. But I think TJ was just trying to be helpful based on the law on the land and telling me that that was required. But I hear what you're saying about making an effort to encourage more. So that's a good thought.
That a grandfathering will stay or a concession when we apply for dark sky. No, it's always been part of the code, basically because it's really hard to make people change something that already exists. But it means the dark sky application accepted.
We, yeah, we applied.
Turn to.
We applied with the dark sky under the earlier version of the dark sky regulations, which didn't require retrofitting. But it does make sense, you know, on sale is a great time to say as things turn over that we make progress towards goals.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm pretty sure I brought this up a couple of months ago. Let's put some teeth in this as well. Just want to, let's keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Comment.
Dan, is online.
Online.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Hi, just a general request as the topic of open space, recreational space, safe space for children and solar panels or whatever. I'd like you to kind of keep the east side of town in mind. It's growing. There is no designated park on this side of the highway. And there are, the neighborhood's growing. There are a lot of children over here. And sometime in the future, if there's an opportunity for the town to acquire some space over here, I'd just like to kind of put that bug in on the table and say, you know, some kind of a park or, or playground would be an important thing for this side of town.
Thank you, Pam. That's a good point. Point, point taken. All right. Anyone else for public comments? See none online, none in the room. We'll move on to policy matters. Item number four is order declaring a local disaster in and for the town of Bridgeway, Colorado. I'm Andrew Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You're going to have to bear with me for a minute while I read this prepared statement. Kudos to Joanne for helping put the synopsis together. So before you is an order declaring a local disaster in for the town of Bridgeway. It would extend the order that I issued earlier today to September 12th. I issued the original order based on my role and responsibility as the principal executive officer for the town. So on the morning of August 12th, that was this last Monday, town staff made a routine check of Beaver Creek diversion and found that a rain event over the weekend, likely on Sunday afternoon or Sunday evening, I think a lot of us remember that, had severely impacted Beaver Creek above the town's diversion point. In a normal rain event, the increased flows at Beaver Creek can wash out the town's push-up diversion of the creek and the high flows remain in Beaver Creek. For the first time in the 45-plus years that the current town staff has been observing the creek, significantly altered by the weather event washing out the land between the two braids of the creek. It eroded the side banks undercut the river so that the river at the diversion location appears to be below the elevation of the grizzly that screens the water from the diversion before it goes into the Ridgeway ditch. So to paint a picture for you, the Ridgeway ditch and the Beaver, Beaver Creek no longer mesh at all. In addition, the event filled the Ridgeway ditch with a mud slurry, slurry from bank to bank to the top of the ditch for hundreds of feet. And I'll share some photos in a second. So I'll do it now. I'll share my screen too. Hopefully folks on Zoom can see the screen. This first photo, you can see the grizzly. It's not really the grizzly, but the diversion trough, the first segment of the Ridgeway ditch, they're filled with mud, rocks, gravel, other debris. Just the top of the trough is visible. That's the end of the photo. Beaver Creek normally, even during high runoff period, tends to carry a pretty heavy gravel burden, which we've talked about in a few forums here at town council level. We haven't seen the sediment mode that you can see here. Part of the town's diversion system includes a pipe that catches the flow from some springs on the opposite side of Beaver Creek. It has been transported to the Ridgeway ditch. We have pipes suspended over the creek. It goes into the ditch. It was in pieces on Monday morning, as you can see in that photo right there. As you look upstream, it looks like something created a dam in the creek. The creek backed up for a period of time, not quite sure how long, then it broke, causing extraordinary extraordinary slug of water and mud to be released to the creek, eroding the banks, widening the creek, cutting the creek, commodifying the overall configuration of how the, how the creek flows. The channel had previously been held in place in part by vegetation along the banks there. The wash away during the event over the weekend, presumably on Sunday afternoon or evening. This next photo shows what looks like evidence of flow obstruction that then breached. And it also shows the cutting stream banks observed on Monday. Restoring the diversion for long-term performance is going to be a big challenge and an expensive task. Like I mentioned before, the creek is no longer aligned with the ditch. The creek is undercut and at a lower elevation. The creek is also much wider than it was before. The new stream banks were unstable. The trees at the top edge of the bank in many cases have parts of their root systems exposed. Putting material back or to put the creek back as it was would take quite some time to stabilize, maybe years. It's likely that the long-term fix for diversion will need to be something that takes into account extreme weather events, like handle normal fluctuations, flows, gravel loads. So right now, at the end of the day, the bad news is that wrote this this morning before we did a more formal damage assessment this afternoon, but there is no water being diverted to the Ridgeway ditch from Beaver Creek. Not making, or making its way down to Lake Etana. One of the assessments this afternoon showed that there are some springs and after the first part of the Ridgeway ditch that are getting some water in there. So just water getting to Lake O. The Beaver Creek diversion is what I would characterize as our primary water source. The good news is that we're not currently drawing water out of Lake O for domestic irrigation purposes. We're only using water from the Happy Hollow drainage source until a point where there's all in that source. What flows is slow to a point where we need to start pouring water from Lake O. So we're in the process of working with Glenn Boyd, you know, them in, Yarra County Emergency Manager, he's here in the audience. We have Bobby Lucero here, the Office of Emergency Management at the State of Colorado, and plenty of others to assess, collect, report the damages that have been incurred and to start the process, to navigate the process for restoration of the activities. So a couple more slides just to show some before and after. And I will say, I've been up there a handful of times. If anyone's like me, a visual person, these photos won't do it justice. This is Randy Barnes, longtime Public Works employee at the trough there doing the normal activities. With the water coming down, just on a, on a standard day, there's another picture of the trough on a standard day. That's what it looks like now. You all saw that photo already. A lot of debris in there. That is the pipe on what was a normal day, carrying water from the springs beyond Beaver Creek there into the ditch. That pipe is now in pieces. You can pick it there. This is the grizzly that screens the water into the headgate infrastructure and you can see the gravel that collects there. Really big gravel loads traditionally come down from there. And this is not an apples-to-apples photo. Can't quite tell based on the, how this photo was taken, where the grizzly would be. But you can tell that's the vicinity of where the grizzly is and you can see that that whole configuration's changed and the creek is, is well over a number of feet. So that's the end of the slideshow. Just wanted to paint a picture for you all, but that's, that's currently where we're at. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, you said the current source of water from the Happy Hollow ditch is our primary source right now, unless there's a call. Is there any way to negotiate those that have the rights on Happy Hollow to take this situation again?
I'm sure there's, there's the ability to have those conversations and see what might happen, but we are junior on that, that water source. But I hope that when senior would be amenable to conversations, but luckily we're not at that point.
Has anybody, I mean, we have the town engineer, non, your husband, given any sort of huge ballpark figure on what it's going to take to, to rebuild this thing? And I know we've talked for years about piping from the diversion structure to Lake O or as far as we can in there. I'm starting to wonder, even if we did that, what would keep that from getting worked up at another event?
Yes, right. If events continue the way they are.
Yeah.
If your question's about a ballpark, they hear, we've been throwing that around. Someone, someone irresponsible just don't start going around numbers. I get it stuck in people's heads. But we've had this conversation a few times and I threw out $2.3 million yesterday. Just as a starting, but that really depends on, on the resources at our disposal, the assistance to get from FEMA and other organizations. Because my understanding is that FEMA helps restore it to what it was before. And based on what we're looking at, what I've heard about it there and hopefully get up there tomorrow or the next day, I don't know that that's possible to restore. We may have to look at alternatives. So, you know, that in mind, that's where I came up with that figure. You could ask Joanne, who's a subject matter expert, former engineer, and she would tell you probably something, something similar that figure, but that's, that's what's still in this damage assessment period.
Another thought I had, and maybe this is more of a question for Bobby, is, you know, there's got to be other municipalities in the West that get their water from a mountain source like ours that have been through similar events and things that could be learned from those experiences, I'm guessing. Maybe not, I don't know. Is anybody want to talk about that or?
Sure. I could attempt. Good evening. I'm Bobby Lucero with the Division of Public Security.
Thanks for being.
Emergency Management. Yes, I'm the Westfield manager in Yarra County, one of my colleagues. So you're correct. So there are several other mountain communities that probably rely on mountain springs and creeks for their primary water source. However, with your guys' unique situation, this is one of the first steps during an emergency or disaster where it's, it's an oddity. It's not something normal that happens. It's out of, out of the norm. So we're in the, one of the first steps of identifying that this is not normal. It's out of magnitude to where you may need subject matter expertise or assistance to like the next level of other material and so forth. So what Preston was alluding to is those damage assessments. We are collecting the information. I'm going to get some subject matter experts to take a look. We'll get some really, you know, really good brains like looking at it and like start assessing like what options are out there and assessing what we can try and do to restore or move forward for a long-term solution. But as we're alluding to, like we're literally at the beginning of declaring, doing damage assessments. And then we will continue to meet in the County Emergency Operations Center. Your emergency manager, Glenn Boyd, has the EOC activated. Your emergency manager Glenn Boyd has the EOC activated and he's meeting with several partners amongst all of the municipalities here within the county as well as state partners as well. And we'll continue to communicate, coordinate, and just find out what we can do moving forward.
Okay, thanks. That's real good. So simple from the situation that Paul and Happy Hollow, if Lake O is our storage or battery, how much time based on current consumption patterns do we have stored? Yeah, that's the next question, which is how long is your two point three million dollars likely to take to correct the situation? Probably all questions really hard to answer.
Yeah, questions hard to answer. Luckily, we enjoyed doing some really important. Came up with an answer. Absent Happy Hollow, absent taking into account seepage, evaporation losses. When you're just talking about what we have in Lake O, again, we're not even that account now. Certainly don't want to be alarmist, but just trying to answer the question, conservatively speaking, a hundred days. But again, that does not apply, right? Because of what we have.
But that's our battery.
Yes, the backup battery. Terry literally is battery ready. I know.
Other questions for Preston Council? Obviously, this is why we're doing emergency declarations. Been a good place to deal with.
And I know we spoke about this yesterday, but I just want to make sure just over communication is better than under. Our town irrigation and these types of things have been cut to like bare minimum levels, correct? Just so we are.
Yeah, we are. There's still more work that needs to be done to make sure we're all on the same page and that we modify and implement as many conservation measures as possible over time. So yes, we're off.
And we're still under voluntary water restrictions? Is there need to open that up?
That's a great question. We are still under voluntary water restrictions. I think I would recommend until we get through the damage assessment, we revisit what we may need. What the outcome is for water source and everything, but that's a really good point. Unless it certainly yells prog and it's still some of the best interest.
If if we're pulling from Happy Hollow for now, so we don't make that move. Yeah, but letting, I mean, community needs to know that if we start pulling from Lake O with a set amount of water there and not refilling it, I think we have to go that direction, but that's not where we are right now.
The other thing I was going to say is that as we put forth the information about what's happened up there, that the status will be updated weekly or whatever. It's probably worth saying, just in those outreach messages, that that the town would appreciate the residents doing everything they can to conserve water in the interim. You know, I think we've always found that the difference between voluntary water, in terms of mandatory water, that chooses negligent people water, they want water. So I think the thing we need to stress in our messaging about what's going on up there is how important it is that people realize that we could have somewhat of a water crisis, depending on how things go.
So this isn't the time to try and establish a line, because Happy Hollow might have a call. Like if you're if you're anticipating doing something that may require more water, now would not be the time to do.
So just part of the messaging. I want to open it up into the room if everybody's got questions or comments. It's kind of scary, but I think we can get through it. So.
I was just going to say the ranchers want it drier, so they put on the egg. They won't. Utilize the water. Getting more water in.
Glenn.
This is Glenn Boyd, our county emergency manager.
Good evening. I just wanted to add, as we're all talking about these declarations of emergencies and information gathering, we sent out a alert today requesting citizens, if you do have property, private property damage, we have a portal for folks to sign up on. We're trying to gather that information in hopes that if something from FEMA comes down or in hopes that if there's small business loans, we can actually prove the magnitude of these storms over since August 5th. And so we're asking anyone that has any property damage on the private property to fill out that survey. Or we know that survey isn't like all encompassing, but we are planning the emergency operations center is to follow up for those folks that have filled out that. We plan to reach out to folks and make sure that they're were able to put everything that they needed to put in there and give us any more explanation than what they were able to put in there. So I just want to throw that out there that we strongly encourage folks to fill that out.
Thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you. It's on a lot of press releases. It will be also on Miranda's Murray County website and all our Facebook pages. We'll make sure it's on the down. Other questions, comments? All right, here and now, and I don't think there's any online. All right, we need a motion to approve this.
Move to the original declaration for the town, anyway. Second.
That's made a motion, Paulie seconds. We'll call both, please.
Councilmember Spramby.
Hi.
Proctor.
I'm Bacon.
I'm Skyler.
Hi.
Stonebell.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Myers.
Hi.
Great passing of the mandate, but thank you. Stay tuned. That takes us to item number five, presentation of the 2023 fiscal year audit. Pete Blair, CPA with Blair and Associates, leave this online. I'll compete.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to go with the audit real briefly, because I know you guys got plenty of things going on. So I'm going to first go to the governance letter that it's a two-page letter that you should have in your packet. And if you go about halfway down that that letter, the first page there, we talked about estimates on the audit. And basically, the only estimate that you have on this audit is depreciation cost. If you go down about the, no, about the third paragraph from the bottom, we did make nineteen audit adjustments. That's about normal. And most of those were accrual entries, bringing things back on a governmental wide basis and some depreciation expense. Everything else came out really well, so we don't have any other issues on that. And then I gave Pam a management report yesterday. You might not have got in your packet, and I'm going to briefly go over that. So on that management report, it breaks the first graph on that report. It talks about fund balances and also talks about working capital basis for the enterprise funds. And if you look, when we go through the audit, basically, your fund balance for the general fund went from three point five million to about four point four. Or your fund balance increased by about eight hundred and seventy thousand, or about twenty-five percent increase. If you look at the water fund, it actually increased by about four hundred and five thousand, which is about a twenty-three percent increase. And then if you look at the sewer fund, it went from about one point two million in available resources to about one point seven. And that increased by about five hundred and eighteen thousand or about forty-two percent. Which is all good, which is all good news there. If you look at the next graph, it talks about operating revenues. And this actually gives you comparison of actual to budget. And we budgeted for the general fund about three point seven in revenues. Sorry, three point seven million in revenues, ended up coming out about four point six million or an increase of about nine hundred and fifty thousand. The main increases compared to the budget were sales tax was up compared to the budget by about four hundred and fifty thousand. Building permits were up about seventy-three thousand. Meral leasing was up about eighty-nine thousand, and that probably one of the big increases for all the entities we're seeing is interest income. An interest income went up by a hundred and eighty-one thousand. If you look at the water fund, you'd budget revenues to be about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, end up being about one point two million. The big increase there were tap fees and interest. Tap fees went up about two hundred and ninety-seven thousand compared to what you budgeted, and interest was about sixty-eight thousand. Sewer fund actually, for the budget, you budgeted about four hundred and thirty-two thousand revenues, ended up being about eight hundred and ninety thousand. Most of again, that was all because of tap fees and interest revenue. If you go to the next graph, it talks about operating expenses. You had budgeted for the general fund, the total expenditures would be about four point three million. They ended up being only about three point seven. That actually went down, or you were in a favorable position for about five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. The big difference there was general government was under budget by about two hundred thousand as far as expenses. Public safety was under budget for about forty-two thousand. Public works was under budget by two hundred thousand, and parks was under budget by about fifty thousand. Water fund, same way, water fund, you budgeted about one point three million in expenses, ended up being about eight hundred thousand. The big difference is you budgeted for a lot more in repairs and maintenance, and that was actually down about four hundred and fifty thousand. Same way with the sewer fund, you budgeted about four hundred and sixty-three thousand and expenses ended up being about three hundred and seventy-one, down about ninety-two thousand. And the big difference again was in consulting, engineering and repair costs. So overall, you stayed way below your budget as far as expenses, and you increased your revenues way above that, which increased the fund balances. I'm going to briefly go over the audit, just a couple of highlight areas. On page one and two is the audit report. And basically, it's a clean opinion, basically saying everything is fairly stated. We had no discrepancies or anything like that. If you go to page five of the MDNA, there's a table there on that page five, and it will actually break it down by governmental activities, business-type activities, and then it'll give you a total call. You're going to see that pretty well. If you look at the governmental activities, it pretty well mirrors two thousand and twenty-two. It's it went up about seven hundred thousand as far as total assets. Mainly, that was all in cash. And if you look at the total liabilities, they went down everything pretty. If you look at total net assets, they pretty well mirrored two thousand and twenty-two. They went up a little bit, but not much. If you look at the business-type activities, again, the big increase was in cash. That went up about nine hundred some thousand. If you look at total liabilities, they pretty well stay what they were in two thousand and twenty-two. And of course, you increased your net position by about nine hundred thousand. If you look on page six, it gives you a really good comparison of your revenues and expenses on a full accrual basis for the governmental activities and the business-type activities. And you're going to notice, as far as the government activities, the total revenues didn't change a lot compared to two thousand and twenty-two. And the business-type activities did because we we use some grant funds. Everything else pretty well stayed the same. Total expenses actually went up a little bit. And that that normally does happen because of depreciation cost. So overall, if you look at the third line from the bottom of that table, you increased your net position for all the funds by about one point six million, which is a great thing. If you, I'm going to skip a little bit and go to page twenty-eight. And as I said, you did increase your cash compared to two thousand and twenty-two. At the end of two thousand and twenty-three, the town had total cash and investments of just almost eight million dollars. Of which, of that eight million dollars in cash investments, about five point three million was in either C-Safe or Color Trust, which is sort of like a money market AAA rated, and their governmental asset pools. And then if you go to page twenty-nine, it will list all the debt that the town Ridgway has, and as we've talked about this before, you have very little debt compared to other towns. You just have about one point three million, that's all. And then if you go and start on page thirty-six and you go the rest of the audit, it will give you budget comparisons for all the funds, the revenues and expenses. And I'm not going to go through those, because we pretty well talked about it on the manus report. Well, overall, the town did a great job. They increased their they increased their net position by about one point six million. All the funds went up, and some of the funds, like the general fund and the water and sewer fund, as far as fund balance or available resources, went up about anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent. Which is a great thing. I went through it real quick, as I know you're you're real busy.
Thanks, Pete. Any questions for Pete and Council? Any questions from the audience? Lots of numbers, but thanks once again, Pam, for doing such a good job with the town finances.
Oh yeah, it's a very good report.
Thanks, Pete, as always.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Pete.
Have a great day.
You too. All right, that takes us to item number six, resolution number twenty-four, national seven, establishing partner city relationship with the city of Fort Smith, Arkansas.
Thank you, Mayor. So a few months back, you all should remember Mr. Tommy Shea. He's got his video going up here. I'll try to zoom in so you can see Mr. Tommy Shea from Fort Smith, Arkansas. He and a group made us a visit and requested a partnership between town and Ridgway and the city of Fort Smith because of the cultural significance of true grid, result time tourism in our communities, stuff even beyond that. So before you, as a resolution, you claiming a partnership between the town of Ridgway, Colorado and the city of Fort Smith, Arkansas. The Fort Smith City Council, my understanding is they approved this resolution a few weeks back. So, Mr. Shea, do you have anything to add?
Thanks for inviting us to join you. We're glad to be here tonight and looking forward to working with you.
And then I see Mr. Carl Gaffkin. He's the city administrator with the city of Fort Smith on two. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Thank you. Yes. Carl Gaffkin, city administrator. Too bad you can't see my background, because it would show you a wonderful painting by the, thank you very much. There we are. Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here. Tom has been a wonderful proponent to develop this relationship, and he's a very strong believer, and we're very happy to have him here. I don't know if you can see the my background. I think you can. That is a painting by a noted Fort Smith painter who has since asked John Bell Jr. Man was disabled and actually paint had needed to paint with his feet. And he is a very well-known painter in the Fort Smith region. And he is a very well noted painter in the Fort Smith region. And this is what Fort Smith looked like at the turn of the prior century. So, you know, it's, it's about the time with, of the true use of the true grid trail and a little after. So, uh, you know, we're looking forward to developing this relationship. Our, our board of directors, which is our city council, did approve uh, the partner city resolution, and we look forward to, uh, developing stronger ties. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for being here. Uh, so anybody else have any questions on this item? If, if you're not aware that, um, the True Grid, original True Grid movie, um, and the book, remind me the author of the True Grid book? You guys know? Set it in Fort Smith, Arkansas. When the movie was filmed, Ridgeway was re- redone at Fort Smith, Arkansas. So, um, that's why we're talking about doing this and, uh, I think it could be a fun partnership, so. Any questions from council?
Hopefully, I had some more tourists.
Yeah? Questions from the audience? Is it online or in the room?
Really enjoyed their visit when they came to visit us, I believe, in the spring, I guess. Ridgeway's still talking about. And if there's any further questions, I'll, I'll move to approve resolution number twenty-four oh seven, the resolution of the town council, town Ridgeway, Colorado, establishing a partner city relationship with the city of Fort Smith, Arkansas.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, Russ, Kevin just barely beat you. Motion by, um, Terry and second by Kevin, uh, local vote please.
Councilor, Mr. Rambling.
Hi.
Crocker.
Hi.
Bacon.
I'm Skylar.
I'm Scogo.
I'm Mayor for Tim Meyer.
Bye. All right, pass this again. Thank you. That brings us to
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all. Very much looking forward to it.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to item number seven, presentation and direction regarding updated concept for Green Street Sustainability Park. Master plan. Uh, Stacy on?
Stacy's on. I'll introduce this before, uh, before Stacy and Diane and the rest of the team uh, start talking about the revised concept. So after substantial input and conversation concerning the preferred concept at the, the last town council meeting, that was uh, July tenth, it feels like it was quite some time ago. Um, Stacy and her team at Super Bloom were tasked with updating the concept based on all that the collective direction that was provided by you all, um, and a revised concept has been developed. Uh, and Stacy's going to present that here in a second. She has a whole PowerPoint to go through. So, same as it was last time, at this point, we're solely looking for direction uh, from council on the makeup of the revised concept. Uh, direction from tonight will inform the last phase of the process where Stacy and her team will finalize a preferred layout for Green Street Park, provide some high level cost estimates for future budgeting purposes. They'll provide a final master plan document, all for adoption. Um, it got slated for September eleventh currently. So that's where we're at. With that, I'll turn it over to Stacy, Diane and the rest of the team.
Thank you, Preston. Oh, and can you give me permission to share a screen?
Yep, there you go. You should be able to do it now.
Yep, okay, cool. All right, um, good to see you all again. Thank you so much for having us. We're pretty excited to be here today to talk about this next, um, sort of iteration and development for the Green Street Sustainability Park. Um, the, the presentation is similar to the one we shared at the last town, town council meeting, so I might go through it a bit quicker, but um, just because we've covered it a couple of times with you guys before, but if, if anyone does need more, you know, clarity or wants to talk more about anything, anything, we can, we can definitely do that. So, um, here is the schedule that we have been kind of following with the meetings and activities that we've already accomplished. Here we are today in August. Um, we've talked about the goals, you know, really a part, creating a park that prioritizes health and wellness. Um, there were a lot of, um, comments in the process around native planting and water efficiency and sustainability. And then power, um, looking at sort of the feasibility and design options for a solar microgrid at the park. And that these three sort of main themes were kind of building together to, um, create this kind of sustainability park. Um, tell me if you guys want to hear this part again, or if John, you want to say anything about the microgrid. We've, we've talked about it a couple of times, but, um, I don't know, John, if you want to say anything again.
I think we've, I think we've talked about it enough.
Okay, great.
I do think it's important to highlight that four hundred and twenty-five kilowatt hours is enough to supply town for four hours. We just talked about a major climate event impacting town. Like, I think, I think that's really important to highlight.
I will say, um, we'll get to the design proposal about the resulting conversations in the last month have actually reduced the, um, size of the solar grid by about half. So we'll show you that design concept and we can discuss it further, but, um, that's right, the initial concepts we were showing through the last few months of the process, each of them had a four hundred and twenty-five kilowatt solar array, um, interspersed with other park elements and the existing community garden and the apiary. Um, here are some of the images that we shared before, which I think this slide is really just to, you know, make the point that there are so many different ways that solar panels can be used. And we heard a lot of great ideas from the community too about things that they loved or just kind of the multifunctional potential for solar at Green Street. Uh, this is a drone image showing the, you know, existing community garden there to the north and the apiary and the very linear shape of, of this piece of land. Um, we did a site visit back in April, and that was also, you know, meeting with several different stakeholder groups like the sustainability committee and the Parks and Open Space and Trails Group, um, the community garden and the apiary members as well. We held a public meeting the next day and kind of talked through, um, you know, anytime you're planning or designing for a piece of land that has finite size, um, how do you balance kind of those different desires and uses within a space? And we talked about, um, how to prioritize those kinds of things and, and just heard sort of open-endedly from the public about, uh, what they might like to see at the park. And then we came back in June and presented three different ideas, so three concepts for Green Street Sustainability Park and um, had some great conversations with the public and talked through, um, you know, some of these different ideas as well. And both the first, um, the first meeting in April and then this meeting in June, we also had an online survey, which many of you participated in, and, um, so that was also really great. You can see like the second round of surveys, we got over a hundred responses. And then, um, last month in July, we came to you, to town council and shared this kind of consolidated concept, um, which showed some of the different bits of feedback that we received in those earlier processes and then kind of like, yeah, bringing it together in one plan. Um, and you gave us some really great, pretty clear feedback. Um, one, the first one was to reduce the amount of proposed solar if possible and to leave more usable green space open. But that, um, having solar was really important here. And so, as, as kind of was mentioned earlier, that contributing to this kind of larger vision of resiliency and sustainability for the town was also really important. Um, so in light of that too, to kind of look, um, to maximize solar on built structures or kind of in combination with other uses, um, to look at solar fencing where possible, kind of around the community gardens. And then to, um, to add clarity and kind of prioritize the potential for these community gathering spaces that could be also under the, um, shade structures, the solar shade structures. So, um, today, and you know, we've had some internal conversations as well, and, um, based on that feedback, kind of have a different design. Um, it has all of the same elements that we've been talking about, um, throughout the entire process. So solar panels, um, native planting and restoration, play areas, um, shade structures, gathering areas. It, um, keeps the community garden and the apiary in their same areas. I'll just add too, um, after the last meeting, we did receive like letters and additional direct feedback too and conversations with the community garden, um, members and the apiary. So those have also, um, hopefully to their liking, been incorporated into this, this plan as well. Um, but I think the biggest thing that you might be able to see here is that in all of some of the previous options, we kind of had larger groupings of solar panels that were surrounded by fences that, um, kind of took up these blocks of space in the park. And, um, it was decided kind of in the last month through conversations that it would be feasible to reduce the total number from the four hundred and twenty-five, which was kind of initially, um, calibrated to that kind of goal of, of what it would be able to provide as far as time, off-grid time. So, um, in spite of that, you know, we have reduced it and then, um, instead of having it be kind of in the middle of the park, we are showing these tracking panels that are kind of on the um, western edge of the property. So, and those could also have, you know, shrub buffers as well. We did hear concerns from people about visual impacts and things like that. So, um, and then the solar that kind of lands more, um, in the park is incorporated into shade structures. So this, um, area that's number two, covered picnic area, this is showing the existing pom house and a potential new restroom. Being, sharing this kind of, um, solar roof that would then underneath it provide spaces for picnic, um, tables or other kind of gathering spaces. And that that would kind of bridge between the north and south areas of the park. So we've kind of carved out, um, one of the other big things that we heard was that there was a desire to really separate kind of little kid play activities from maybe teenage or kind of older kid play activities. So we've done that, um, a bit more in this plan as well. So to the south of that shade structure, we're, we're showing more, um, nature play, natural materials for younger kids. And then, um, here in kind of like the, the north, um, side of that, we're showing, there was a lot of excitement around the idea of like bouldering and you know, things that might appeal to older kids. And so, um, we're showing that kind of like older kid teen player, like climbing zone over here where it would be, um, further away. And all of these spaces are kind of connected by trails. And, um, we would, you know, work to kind of restore the grasslands and meadows around those spaces. Um, as I said, these areas, you can see the kind of linear blue along the back edge, those would be tracking solar array panels. Um, we're also showing another kind of shaded gathering space up here by the community garden. Uh, the community garden mentioned that they would like having some more shade for their play area as well. Uh, we're showing some solar fencing. There was also some interesting conversations. Um, one of the big issues the community garden faces is also wind. So having these kind of vertical solar fencing panels, um, appeal to them as a way of potentially sheltering the wind that comes in from the west. And then, um, we also have a solar carport here, which could be outfitted as well with, um, charging stations. Um, so, and the, the numbers over here kind of show the, the, the spaces. And then, um, folks asked for more information about the height of some of the fences and the panels. So we did a couple of sections that show kind of the eight-foot high fence with the tracking panels at the edge of the western park boundary. And so this is like a section through that teen area, kind of a letter B here. Um, we have a cross-section at, uh, up here by the community garden, so letter C. This is showing this idea of like a multi-use shade structure with solar panels next to the community garden and a solar carport. And, um, that, those are all the images we have, but I'm happy to answer questions about this direction. Um, or, you know, anything else about the process that I may have missed or that people want to talk about.
Thanks, Stacy. This is great. Um, I think it shows our willingness to compromise. Um, I, uh, honestly, I was hoping there would be more like reduction of twenty-five percent rather than fifty percent of the solar. Um, you know, I think there have been conversations, uh, in the ensuing weeks and months that the school has stepped up and said that there could probably be some solar panels located on that uh, slope that faces south next to their main parking area, secondary school. Probably are some other options out there. So I think this is workable, but I'm interested to hear what the rest of council thinks.
I really like it, and I appreciate you doing the elevations. I think that helps all of us have a concept in our head for, you know, how tall these panels are and what sort of visual impact they'll have for the area residents. Um, I think the compromise of having a lot of the solar panels be also shade structures is great for people who want to be hanging out outdoors, but they, their dogs or their kids need a little bit of break from the sun. So I think you did a great job taking into account a lot of the community feedback we had at the meeting last month. I appreciate that.
I think the fifty percent cut does not, um, position Ridgeway as a leader in, in taking action on climate change. Um, and that, that we can look at that and say it's the result of community discussion, but I'm kind of, kind of just underwhelmed by this, with the idea of showcasing Ridgeway's excitement about sustainability.
Anyone else?
I do wish there, like John said, there was maybe a twenty-five percent cut in solar versus fifty percent, but I do think this looks like something that's going to benefit our communities and, um, is giving us what, uh, we've kind of asked for and the community at large has asked for.
Certainly what the community at large has asked for. And I, again, I think maybe we can make it up in some other places. We'll just have to see. Any other comment up here? If not, anybody in the audience? Go ahead.
How you guys doing? I'm number two, Fox. I live right in town. And I feel as if these numbers aren't honest, but I've worked in solar and wind resource assessment for twelve years. And there's no, uh, solar resource assessment towers going up right now or in place. That there's no testing being done to show the actual numbers of what we can actually get. We get wind, we have a lot of dust, snow, and the maintenance that needs to be put into this is not showing exactly how much output we will receive. Numbers sound great, but it's, it's actually at optimal ideal numbers. It's not the truth. So we are buying a house without looking inside. That's all.
Okay, I can comment on that. These are showing, um, well, first off, if a camel was a horse designed by a community, this camel has seven humps. This is showing placement of solar with relative quantities of solar. It's not even speaking to the energy. But what will occur from this point on if the town council chooses to go forward? We've got Wiley Freeman here from S and P that could describe this in more detail. The planning grant will then take the final concept and then do the engineering studies to determine how much energy will be produced. Right now, this doesn't even address energy. It just shows quantity of solar.
Or being sold at a number that's not actually well worth it yet. For four hundred and twenty-five kilowatts, yes. That's possible, that's potential. That's not actually what it could produce.
No, it's not even addressing it. It's just showing quantity of solar panels at roughly half of that, so two hundred, two hundred and fifty, it says up there in the left-hand corner.
Potentially, yeah.
Yep. But it doesn't address how much energy to produce.
That comes out of a continuing.
So what he's saying is there's, there's solar panel size to produce that much. It's not a study of exactly like you said, it's not a study of our, our solar conditions.
That will be the next step that S and P A will conduct as part of a granted feasibility study that they have funding to do. Maybe, maybe this is the time that Wiley can come up and speak to S and P A's perspective on this. This is, so what, what initiative? Yeah, that's your call, John.
Yeah, Wiley, why? Monica?
Hey, Wiley. Good evening. Uh, I'm Wiley Freeman, and I work down the, uh, street here at Row Road at the San Diego Tower Association office. I've been employed there, and I like to refer to it as your not-for-profit rural Olympic cooperative. I've been employed there and I like to refer to it as your not-for-profit rural electric cooperative. You receive power from S and P A. You're a member and we operate on a not-for-profit basis. And I, um, been working at that office for the last twelve years. I am the manager, a member in energy services, if I didn't say that already. And I, um, S and P A recently submitted a letter to the town council of Ridgeway. Probably didn't get it until, uh, moments before or days before the meeting. So, uh, I don't feel bad if folks haven't had a chance to read it, but I'm here today to represent some of those points that were expressed in that letter. And it is really, uh, regarding, um, what's happening in the world of electricity today, especially in our small mountain communities. San Miguel Power provides electricity to over thirty-six hundred square miles here in western Colorado from Silverton to Ray and Ridgeway, Telluride, Mountain Village, and then all the way, uh, west to the Utah border. We have over two thousand miles of, of distribution power line. Some of that is buried and some of that is overhead. That is enough power line to reach all the way to Guatemala. And we have a team of professional linemen that work to maintain that and provide reliable and safe electricity to all of the roughly ten thousand five hundred members that, that receive power from S and P A. We have fallen into a pattern of doing a really good job over the years of maintaining all of that infrastructure. But as probably many of you who are following what's happening in the electric industry are seeing massive changes that we haven't seen in decades in this business. And a lot of how we operate is being turned on its head. One of the things that we have taken a focus on at San Miguel Power is, um, built into our mission statement, and that's reliability. But we now have to take a slightly different look at what, what does rely, electric reliability mean? And we're seeing climate events that you guys just discussed that affected a water system for a municipality. Well, that's happening all throughout Colorado, all throughout the American West, where it could have, an event like that could have affected the, uh, um, many miles of power line that we're responsible for, that bring you electricity. And in the industry, we like to say that electricity has no shelf life. We don't have like a Tama Wanda currently to store electricity and have a reserve for when there's a disruption to the power supply or a disruption to the power lines that deliver that power to you. So, um, but technology is changing. And so we are looking at, um, a new strategy of resiliency through energy storage. In fact, Terry referred to, um, like, oh, the battery this, already this evening. And, um, that was what is a big part of, um, incorporating, um, battery store, battery energy storage into the grid that serves specifically the town of Ridgeway. And Green Street Park was going to be a component of that. And I just feel like it's important to acknowledge that Green Street Park is absolutely no silver bullet to meeting all of the goals of the town. You have adopted a climate action plan, which calls for addressing climate change through action, such as installing more local renewables and lowering carbon emissions through a variety of measures, whether that's building efficiency, um, uh, developing solar, um, increasing conservation efforts, um, it's really an all of the above. Green Street Park is not going to get you all the way there, but it would be a step. And I'm very pleased to see that the community, uh, thus far has decided to incorporate some element of renewable energy generation into the design. We have the ability to make these plans and, and be the architects of our future. And when we're facing climate and we have communities that have adopted climate action plans, to me, it makes sense that we would incorporate renewable energy generation into those designs. As far as the storage, I mean, it was mentioned earlier that the Green Street Park would provide a backup power supply to the town. And that's, um, partially true. Um, what we're really looking at through the feasibility study that S and P A got a grant from the Department of Local Affairs, um, last year, we're looking at actually putting the battery storage, the actual container, that whole battery energy storage device in the S and P A yard. There wouldn't be any battery storage incorporated into Green Street Park. But this gets me to another point. By the way, I do, uh, really appreciate the connection you guys have made with a, uh, town in Arkansas. And it, it makes me kind of, um, I'm really enamored by the idea and the notion that if we look deep enough, we're going to find a connection with anyone, even if they're in another state across the country, really cool connection. And for me, that connection that exists, that can be there, it can be revealed, is, uh, literally, um, manifested in the electric grid. We're all connected with the electric grid. And so if we're generating power at Green Street Park, those electrons can go through the grid to the battery storage facility at the S and P A yard just down the road here. So, um, in that way, we can provide the, the, the energy storage that would be the, um, ma- maybe we call it battery, oh, when it gets built. And, um, we're pretty confident that we will be able to build that battery because yesterday we did receive, um, award notification from DOLA. We have, we had previously applied for a two million dollar grant to help pay for that installation. They ended up, um, giving us a contingent award of two and a half million dollars. So we're pretty stoked that, um, we got more than we asked for. And, uh, we're also, um, proud that we were awarded a grant to incorporate solar, um, photovoltaics at the Ridgeway facility behind our fence in the S and P A yard. So, um, in those, in that manner, I think S and P A is, we're, we're acknowledging the changes in the industry. We are grateful to the, the federal stimulus money, um, federal grant money that's been made available. We feel like that is a huge win for the members that we serve in the service territory, including the community of Ridgeway. And those were, these are some of the points that were expressed in the letter. Um, in terms of getting to a hundred percent renewable energy supply, which I think many, um, would probably take an initial position that that's a worthy, um, thing to aspire. Certainly the state of Colorado has, has moved that direction with mandates that the electricity supply delivered to consumers in Colorado is at least fifty percent by the end of next year and at least eighty percent by the end of twenty thirty. Um, working with our wholesale power provider, Tri-State, we're likely to see greater percentages than that by the end of next year. They are rapidly deploying very large solar arrays in Colorado to help push, uh, renewable energy onto the grid and increase that energy, renewable energy supply. Um, is that a silver bullet, in my opinion? Um, it's, it's a huge step in, in, in fulfilling that goal. Green Street Park is another piece, um, putting solar on, on rooftops, putting solar on the S and P A facility, incorporating battery storage, incorporating thermal storage. I would say there are a lot of strategies that need to be deployed at this point. And so, um, my colleagues and I, and, um, working with, with contractors and, um, private industry that's developing innovative new products for energy management and energy storage and energy generation, um, are, are going to see this happen at all levels, whether it's in your own house. You have batteries in your own garage. You have your own EV. It's going to be happening on the distribution level where we're incorporating utility scale batteries. And it's going to happen at an even bigger level to generation transmission. Uh, Tri-State's looking at a hundred-hour duration, uh, iron-air battery installation. It's going to take all of that if we're going to get, um, progressively towards a hundred percent renewable and, and, and more, uh, reduction in carbon emissions. Um, trying to think of one other point, um, okay, very specific to Green Street Park. I just told folks here that we have grant money for batteries, um, uh, deployment and that, that's a big win. Um, Green Street Park, we did not apply for any funding tax or build. Any kind of solar at Green Street Park couldn't because we were, we hadn't concluded the feasibility, um, uh, study process. Um, I want to thank the town for taking on a big part of local renewable energy development, which is citing and community acceptance. That's a huge piece. That's probably one of the biggest challenges nowadays to, uh, local, um, renewable energy, whether it's geothermal, solar, or CO2. And you guys have really stepped up and we really appreciate the partnership that we feel, we at S and P A feel we have with the Ridgeway community. Um, we absolutely would want to continue that partnership and look for funding mechanisms to do the build-out that would be required for Green Street Park solar, if it is accepted. Um, we are looking at leveraging investment tax credit through the IRS. We would look at, um, maybe the town has options. Um, this configuration is, is probably, you know, anyone that's experienced installing solar, when you have seven separate arrays at different tilts and different racking mechanisms, cost is going to go up. So this is not a very affordable solar array. Um, I think initial designs were, were closer to the, to the better economies of scale and, um, would be a little bit more economically positive. But this is still a showcase, I believe, for the town of Ridgeway incorporating, incorporating renewables into your design plans. With that, um, I think I've taken up a lot more time than I should have and, uh, happy to answer questions. I don't know if, if I just, was it council or audience has questions? I'm not sure how that works. Thanks.
So does the current planning grant that you have enable continued study, whatever is accepted by the council purposes of looking for future grant?
Uh, we, we did get an extension from DOLA on the planning grants. And yeah, we're going to do our best to incorporate continued, uh, analysis. If this plan is designed to, to look for funding oppo- opportunity and how to actually get this thing built.
Thanks, Wiley. Can we ask some questions for a while? Anybody in the audience have questions for Wiley? Yeah, Sheldon? No? Yes, over here.
And the funding description, what about, um, that incorporating, was this a city versus twenty? If one of the bridges had nothing with that, putting funding to make an improvement, to begin with. And I did, but you needed a whole, a last name. But I heard it, and there was no funding for the green part of that. Is that incorporated?
We, we will budget for that. That's, no, it's not incorporated and it's all a part of the discussion, discussing. But it's presuming we prove this, we will budget in our strategic plan for the other components, the park components of the project. There's no project. There, there, there's no detail. There was a, there was a conceptual plan from twenty fifteen. It was never more than a conceptual plan. This is much more involved. Should this be approved, it will include enough background for us to budget for phases going forward to complete all the aspects of.
So, so we, we have a budget year by year. So what would happen is this would kind of probably get phased out into different pieces because we don't generally budget for something this big for Ridgeway. And then that would go into our capital improvements plan. And every year when we go to budget, we look at that and look at what projects we can get done. And so when we think about parks, we think about maintaining cart while we think about our athletic park master plan that we just passed and think about which of those pieces makes sense for us to move forward with in the next year. And that's part of the budgeting process that we'll be starting in the fall.
So it is possible that we not have these built in our inventory.
Absolutely.
It's the same as the Ridgeway Athletic Park Master Plan that was just done. Now we have the plan, but it's going to be in phases and there's not funding for it yet. But you have to have the plan first before you can budget for it.
The same for, right.
I just think it's the same thing. We don't have a budget for it yet.
How, how large is a solar system? Do you get funding for for S and P A's?
That grant award was based on a hundred and twenty kilowatt roughly DC.
As much as this show. You talked about the big battery, which I think is super exciting. I think that's a really cool, uh, thing. Um, I understand that this project could feed into that battery, but it could also be fed by other renewables coming into your system. Um, what's the mechanism that that battery is dedicated to? Is that what the funding is for specifically? Uh, backup?
Yeah, and, and the grid that serves, um, Ridgeway. So it's, we, we call it a, a, it's a circuit or a feeder that comes out of the Dallas Street substation, which is over by the, the rat trails. That circuit has a point, um, in which we would put a switch. So we already have the switch i- in there so that it can isolate pretty much just the, the core of town, not every electric, uh, load in town, but the majority of it. And that's kind of what would be an island, a grid, a microgrid island, which instance of an outage. We don't, we've never engineered something like that before. We've always looked at the theater level and just considered the whole, every, all the loads and everything on that theater was coordination for safety and sectionalization. So we did, there is a fault on the system. We can keep these people with power while we fix that instead of everyone going out of power. But with the battery, it adds a, a whole nother level. But we concentrate on, on being able to, if there is something that's affecting the grid, it could be a wildfire. It could be a wildfire that's not anywhere even in our service territory that is interrupting power supply from Tri-State to the Dallas Street substation. In that case, yes, the surrounding areas of, of Ridgeway would be out of power and, and just the core of Ridgeway would have battery backup in that case. And it may last four hours, depends on the loads that are going on at the time. It happened to be during the day. Uh, then solar, uh, any solar panels that are connected to that islanded grid would, would help carry the load and help the grid maybe recharge the battery even. Lot of, lot of factors that go into it. Um, is, is that kind of clarifying what your question?
Yeah. So if the bad, in, in the case of an outage, the battery picks up that core of Ridgeway, powers it for four hours. If it happens during the day, the solar at Green Street would connect to the circuit, reducing the amount of, of energy the battery has to supply as well as the solar on S and P A's yard as well as the solar on my house.
Yeah, and many other houses within that.
Anybody in town that's solar is actually participant in resilience if the outage occurs during?
Yeah, and, and I guess one of the things about, um, when the grid is all, everything's good on the grid, all the power lines are working, um, it's what we've been doing for decades is typing in energy that's, that was generated at a central plant somewhere far, far away, maybe three hundred miles, maybe up in Craig, Colorado, bringing it in. Um, when there's obstruction on the grid and you don't have local battery storage or local generation, you know, you, you can no longer bring in energy from the long distance. Um, I look at it as, I'm very happy to say that the state of Colorado is, is mandating, uh, the greening of our electric supply as a whole. Like I said, we, you know, we're, we're approaching eight, a hundred percent, you know, um, twenty, thirty and beyond. But when we want to talk about resiliency and community independence, we're going to have to start looking at where do we use the generator power here? How do we store that energy so that we can use it when we need it after the sun's gone down? Solar technology just happens to be one that's off the shelf. It's very easy for folks to, um, deploy. It can be a single panel on your RV. It could be a huge solar farm. It's all the same technology. It's just a matter of scale.
Let this off a whole neighborhood that doesn't want this plan.
Wait, this plan or the proposal?
The prior. I'm, I'm just saying that it seemed like last night, the whole neighborhood on the other side was very close to the location. It doesn't seem like that's changed.
We cut it by fifty percent and it wasn't the whole neighborhood.
Maybe, maybe we.
Yeah, we, we shouldn't be. Um, we, you can have the time to plug in if you want to make comments. Um, I, I'd like to keep us moving because again, we have a bunch of people here.
Thank you. Thanks, Wiley.
All right. So I, I, once again, online and in the room, if there's anywhere else that feels like they, they'd like to make a comment about this revised design, um, please come on up and give us your comments.
That's Adele. Um, I know. Hey, I'm Sheldon Kerr. I live on South Laura Street. And, um, I couldn't help but notice that this meeting started with declaring a disaster, hopefully. And that this is a disaster caused by weather events. And that the sort of weather events we can anticipate upcoming in our future are going to continue to be at a scale we haven't seen before. That's what climate change does. I've been accused of being like, sort of, on the climate change is so inevitable, like I've stopped recycling end of the spectrum. I've been actually, but sometimes I think about it. Um, but the other end of the spectrum that, or the way that I sort of like pull myself back from that abyss is instead of being like, well, I can change, I can stop climate change. I definitely. I can stop climate change. I definitely can reduce our vulnerability to it. And then I think that community resiliency to the sort of climate change, to, to climate change, to the sort of thing that's going to keep causing disasters like this is incredibly important. And even for me who so often feels like all is lost, this is a thing that I can definitely sink my teeth into. I think that thinking about aesthetics or about the, whether the bees will like it or not, or about our kids' green space, these things just won't matter when a wildfire has cut off our power supply. Or when a flood has taken out our power and simultaneously necessitated pumps in like a number of people's houses. I think power resiliency is fundamentally important. I also want to add that one of the reasons that I wasn't up here raising heck when the solar array exited out of the athletic park project was that I was and maybe didn't quite understand, but I thought I'd been assured that it was going to find a home here. And so if it's going to exit this location, I'd like more than sort of a hopeful best case scenario, we can put it over at the school before it leaves this location. And for the record, I much prefer the previous design concept to this one, having slashed so much of the capacity. Thanks.
Good. Thanks, Sheldon.
Hi. I'm Joyce, a member of Sustainability Advisory Board, but also resident here. And I think that Super Bloom did a great job of trying to integrate all the wants of the community. But the reality is, is if there are seven separate systems and it's only half of the original proposal, this is going to be an incredibly expensive park that also doesn't have a lot of motivation for S and P A to maybe help partnership take ownership. And so I guess my concern is that because it's so expensive and we have tons of competing capital improvement projects that this will just become another park that is down the queue. But if we could consider something with a larger solar way array and something a bit more cohesive that is more economic build that perhaps with the assistance from S and P A, this is something that could be built in the next five years. And with a larger solar panel, also it increases our, our ability to be resilient. And also we have these aggressive climate action plans for our community and there's no way to achieve them without renewable energy in our area. So I, I love parks, but I also am an advocate for resiliency and renewable energy. And I just wanted to to mention that I think that if town council really wants to move forward on our cap goals, we, we have to consider optimizing renewable energy in this community. So.
Next, anyone? Sheldon.
Sheila Williams, five seventy Marion Overlook here in Ridgway. And I want to thank the council for listening because I think what you heard was that we all support solar. And I think what this has done is it's a, as you suggested, a reasonable compromise. There are other locations within the town. I was really excited to hear what Sampa's doing because I don't know about that. And there's another big source of power that is going to come online. I did talk to A D U, the executive director at the library, and they have cars in their parking lot all the time, unlike the community garden. And she has said she'd already talked to you, Preston, about the library would like to get some additional solar in their parking lot. So it's not like this is, if, if it doesn't all happen here, it's not going to happen. It is going to happen. And I was really pleased to hear that you have solar in your home as we do. At the end of the year, we actually have surplus. So we are feeding into the grid more than we use in an annual basis. So it compromises probably usually, don't make everybody happy. But I think it's a, it's, it's a very good start. And I really appreciate the fact that you guys listened and that the consultants listened. And I think I think it's a, it's a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheldon.
I'm Kristen Arnold. Again, I live on North Forest Street. And I want to echo Sheldon Chris comments and also say that again, when we were having the meetings about the athletic park, we talked about putting solar in there and we pushed, we pushed it down the road. We said, we'll put it in Green Street. And now I feel we are attempting to do the same thing. And I would like to say that I want assurances that this is going to happen, that we are going to have zones where we can implement solar in consolidated areas. If we want to be the leaders, if Ridgway wants to be a leader and clean energy wants to be a leader in protecting and like providing sustainability for our town residents, we have to say yes in my backyard, I will put this here. And we have to give assurances to our community that we will provide something that will help us be more resilient. And I like call on you, the town council, to be leaders to direct that conversation. Thank you for your work. And I think that we need you all to say, hey, actually, this is what's best for our community. And we need to put this in. So thank you. And I would like to say that I also like the idea of the first plan where the solar was more consolidated and higher storage capacity.
Okay, take a couple online, Pam.
Thank you. I've participated in the open houses and the conversations. I've been in full support and verbally of this project. I'm really, really disappointed to see how little solar there is in this plan. I know the squeaky wheels and the, and neighborhood has had a lot to say, but this project is not about one neighborhood. This project is about the entire town and I appreciate and echo everything that's been said so far. We have to start taking steps forward. And to me, this plan and, and absolutely no, no criticism of, of the, the consultant group, the Super Bloom group that's done this work. They've put in a huge amount of effort, but I was very happy with the amount of solar we talked about. Yes, in the athletic park and here, and I would have been happy to see it in both. But this, this just doesn't cut it. This does not move us forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Jake, take it online.
Hi, Jake Neese. You're a Ridgway resident. First, just want to mention that July was the hottest month on record and it was the fourteenth consecutive month of record global heat. We have to remember that climate change is real and it's affecting us, affects us through wildfires, floods and other ways. I am disappointed to see the severe reduction in the amount of solar. And I actually don't recall clear direction from town council to make such a drastic reduction in solar. In fact, I don't recall hearing a clear direction to reduce the amount of solar. What I do remember was moving it to the south end and that doesn't appear to have been addressed or considered at all. It, it seems like there might have been some other discussions after the meeting that weren't, that the public wasn't privy to. So I, I don't really see this plan aligning with, what I heard the council give direction to Super Bloom about in the last meeting. Also want to point out that there are only so many places to connect to the grid and that with token installations like this, it's not going to get the town to the goal it set. This is the time to be brave enough to take big bites now. This isn't the first project that has come up. There's been consideration of solar at County Road Ten. That was shut down. There was consideration of solar at the athletic park, again, shut down, pushed to Green Street. And now we're looking at a very token installation, not substantive at all of solar here. You know, we're just continuing to kick the can down the road and this isn't the start. This, we've already been down this road several times in this community. So I would encourage that you look at one of the original plans with more solar that's actually substantive. And if you do go forward with this plan as presented tonight, I don't think you should call it a sustainability park because I think that would be greenwashing. It needs to be a substantive amount of solar in order to really be a sustainability park. Otherwise, it's, it's just a hollow action. Thanks.
Thanks, Jake. And Chantel, I see you online, but I'm going to take another couple here and I'll come back to you.
But I also want to make a point. I disagree that you think there was a side conversation that the public wasn't privy to because I feel like at the end of all the community feedback last meeting, we very clearly gave Super Bloom direction that based on community feedback, it seems that a reduced solar array was a potential that they should.
They should, they should consider it, but the south end was very.
He's saying that that was not at all given, and it was that we, we did give Super Bloom the direction to consider a lower solar. So
I was shocked when I saw this. Why there is not a sizable solar array on the south end is a travesty. Like I'm, I'm, I just, I think, I think that's.
That's your opinion. I understand. And I, I already said, I was disappointed to see the size too. I'm not sure, I don't, there weren't any private conversations. I think Super Bloom went back to the drawing board based on the discussion they heard. Although to me, the discussion we heard at the last meeting was pretty balanced. There were, there were people saying they, they wanted to see it reduced and that that every single person has said, I am in favor of solar. I want to see solar, just not there and we can't keep saying.
But I think my question though is, did Super Bloom do this based on the direction from council or from their integration of community comment and what they heard from council? I think that's kind of actually what we're getting at here.
It's a very question.
Isn't our job as council to take community feedback into consideration?
It is, but they, they were also, it is our job to take community feedback and integrate it and integrate it and also drive goals forward and take account of the entire community, not discrete neighborhoods. That is our job. And so it is, it is a very valid question where those list of priorities came from.
So if I can just jump in at the conclusion of the work, work session last one. If you remember, I had to pipe in and try to get some, some collective and firm direction from you all because it was a there was a lengthy conversation and it was pretty unclear, right? In mind. As a result of that, we got some better direction, any sort of assertion that some backdoor conversations took place that resulted in this revised concept because it's unpolitically false. I commend Stacy and her team in the efforts they made to try to meet the spirit of what, what was discussed, what was collectively agreed upon. Did it hit the mark? Maybe, maybe not. That's the point of this conversation tonight. I really would recommend not focusing too much on whether or not it hit the mark, but ultimately we're looking for some additional direction from you all, the town council. Of course, through the publicly driven process on how it should be modified further so we can get this finalized. So you know, again, not trying to be long-winded. I know that doesn't provide a firm answer and it's certainly not as like a scapegoat answer. But you know, I, I commend Stacy and her team for, for trying to meet the spirit of the dialogue that happened. And you know, in some ways it was a little, little money trying to sift through how to implement based on the conversation. So I hope that's helpful.
I need to weigh in here too. I was hoping not to have to recuse myself, but I will now to give you the rest, the rest of the picture. So I authored the planning grant that was used to develop this concept, not just this specific concept, the concept of microgrid. And it was, the planning grant specified that we would look at large scale solar on private property, town owned property and S and P A property. The, the timing of the grant was such, the information coming out of this exercise was not sufficient to apply for grant money. We're able to apply for grant money for the battery and for the solar on S and P's property. The planning grant is still open. We still have an extension of time and money to continue to use the funds from DOLA to look at the rest of what was originally in the plan. What has not been discussed publicly is that we're looking at one megawatt solar system on private property in close proximity to town. It would not be within town boundary that we actually have it designed towards one megawatt, which is five, four times the size, four to five times the size of solar here. The reason that hasn't gone forward is we wanted to see what the public reaction would be to solar on town property before we put it on unincorporated Ray County property. So process to look at the next phase of a larger solar system, which would still provide local renewable energy benefits to the town on the same circuit is now in play to go further with. That's going to require a county special use permit, which then opens it up to public hearings throughout the whole county, not just the town of Ridgway. So this is part of a phased approach. The, you know, ideally we would put more solar here if, if the town and the will of the town were to agree to it, which this, this is a democratic process. This is a result of democratic process. The, the town councils have been very supportive. They've, they've funded hiring of Super Bloom to do the master plan to turn the horse into this camel that you see now. But it's not the end of the story. So the planning grant money could be used to explore solar at the school, which may just only benefit the school and not the town. But there is still and has already been a design and a costing close to being ready to apply for a grant or system that's four times the size that would also contribute to the battery and microgrid. So this is a piece of the story, not the whole story. So if it gives anybody any comfort, S and P A is looking at doing more than just this. The logistics of applying for grant for this configuration makes it difficult to justify economically on behalf of the whole co-op. So whereas we as town council are looking on behalf of the whole town, S and P A has to, to look at the economics of a system that would be paid for by S and P A, funded by S and P A, hopefully offset with grants. But the, the analogy would be that could S and P A, for example, look at putting solar in a park in Naterita? When that, when people in Ridgway want to have their, their potentially their electric bills go up to support a solar in a park in that region. So S and P A has to look at the equitability of this throughout its ten thousand members. Whereas the town council is looking at the equitability amongst the twelve hundred members it serves. So just, just as full circle, solar here is a piece of that microgrid. Solar on S and P A's roofs, which we did get grant funded, got a hundred nineteen thousand dollar grant, but solar on S and P A's roof, which by the way is only one eighth of the cost to do that. So it's, it's a, it's a piece of it. We have federal I T C funding to buy down more. We're actually looking at additional grants to fund that as we will look for additional grants on this, grants that only S and P A is eligible. So S and P A through consulting, one of the consultants, is exploring more solar to connect to that battery. Just want to make that clear because that has not been made public before in any concerted way. We have a landowner willing to lease us four to five acres to put a one megawatt solar rate, which will be visible from parts of Ridgway. So you all have a chance to weigh in on whether you like that project as well as other people throughout Ray County, because that will become part of the special use permit that opens it up countywide. So I actually wanted to add that, that's like part of the mix and the information.
I'd like to keep this moving, but I also like to try and wrap it up. A few more comments. Dave, you had your hand up.
Dave Jones, seven hundred Sabeta. I currently chair the Sustainability Advisory Board and the Clean Energy Committee here in town. I love the Super Bloom proposal. But as Stacy gave us her, the charges and what she was looking at, what was left out was cost. And this is totally cost ineffective. It's not going to fly. Elevated solar, plus we don't have a load there. So we're getting four cents per. So we're getting four cents per kilowatt hour on our electricity. It's very expensive and uh, I think what makes sense if the town would like I, I'm not opposed to less solar in the park than what we talked about before, um. You know, decrease it, look at using the school or other areas, but ideally we'll carve out an area where SMP could have a solar array that would be owned by SMP and, and ideally in the south of the park. Uh, that's the cost effective thing to do, to take, you know, whether it's an acre, acre and a half, two acres, whatever it is, take a little bit of the south and just box it off and say, this is going to be where we're going to build a future solar array when we get the grant and the funds to make it affordable so that we can do that and SMP can own that. Um, personally, I think that's the way to go and we take the rest of the plan that Super Bloom has, uh, given us. And the, the elevated solar, that's great if we, if money falls out of a tree and but it's extremely expensive. Again, we don't have any electric load there. So we only get four cents per kilowatt hour, we're not offsetting the thirteen, fourteen cents per kilowatt hour that we pay here in any of our buildings. So it, it's, this is unaffordable unless somebody is just really generous. Um, let's plan a little bit of space in the south and then also look at other properties where we can get the other land that we want.
I think, I think Dave's really onto something. The original block of solar that was proposed and the preferred alternative that we last looked at was three hundred kilowatt hours. We made that two hundred and fifty kilowatt hours, it would give us about what we're talking about here in terms of potential power generation, but we could do it as a unit that we actually could pull off. Um, there is still in all of these proposals, a fair amount of park space. It's like, there is, like, we're talking about park space, like, there is park space, that is important. Um, I I read an article about climate change in two thousand and four that literally shaped the direction of my life. Um, and it is, it is the job of town council to take input from the community, but it is also our job to lead. And I really would advocate for, as I did last month, taking a consolidated solar approach, moving it to the south end of the park where it butts an industrial area. And then leaving the bulk of the park that it butts mostly the residential area as a park. And I'm, I'm stating that for the record now, since apparently I didn't make myself clear enough last month.
Thanks Beth, I'll be sure to help, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Um, I was a little bit late, so I hope I'm not repeating. I hate doing that at public meetings, but I'm Chantel on bug. Um, thank you for putting up the story polls, that was really great, it could show all of us what it looked like. And if you want to do a second go at that as well, I recommend you move the ones you currently have, since they've been up now a week. Move them down to the south end to show the pump house size and the other ones going down the south end. But um, that's just an idea and uh, I was hoping you could explain more because I wasn't part of the Solar Ranch Frontier Park Master Planning Conversations. And I just keep hearing so many rumors, um, around, you know, flowing around about why the solar um, was taken out of that master plan. Um, for example, I heard that it was because the Log Hill residents wanted more pickleball courts. And I heard that there needed to be more parking spots because it's going to be a regional facility. Um, but it just seems like if this is really your priority and, you know, that you would not have moved it from a park that's about thirty times the size of this one. Does I'm just, can you just briefly talk a little bit more clearly and comprehensively of why it was moved from the Solar Ranch Master Planning Process?
Well, I would just throw out real briefly that, um, basically the take was that yes, that's a very big athletic park, but it is where all the towns organized athletics happen. And when we got into the nitty gritty of the, the design process and took into account the input from all the basic in, interest groups, soccer, baseball, pickleball, not just pickleball, but all of the interest groups. It became real apparent that there was barely enough space to address all the needs that people had for organized sports and playground and skate park and all of that. And um, I'll agree with a couple of the other people that spoke that there was, there was comment, well, we can, we can do it in the, the Green Street Park where we talked about it also. So in general, it was that, that that's a specifically an athletic park and the, of the interest groups that represent all the different, um, organized athletics. Showed that there really wasn't enough space for anything but the actual fields and, and uh, courts and all that, if that helps.
No, that does, thank you. So I just, so what I'm hearing you saying was during that master planning process, the special interest for athletics was more important than the solar and the priorities of the Sustainability Committee.
Well, actually, the idea of this sustainability park came around as an idea at an athletic park. And so we were trying to fit in everything that we could into our athletic park. Uh, we have this space in Green Street where, yes, there was a master plan completed, but in the interim, we have put in a community garden, we put in an apiary. And as some community interests have driven things, Green Street Park had shifted. And so the idea was, okay, one of the things Ridgeway values is space to recreate for children and adults in a various bunch of different ways. So we, we did that. One of the other things Ridgeway values according to our master plan, according to our climate action plan is sustainability. So we're going to showcase that somewhere else. And so we moved forward with this plan. Um, there are lots of special interests in Ridgeway and we are trying to, to move them all as much as we can. Uh, but this was, this was supposed to be Ridgeway putting its money where its mouth is when it comes to sustainability.
Hopefully that helped Chantel, I see you taking an end down and turn off your video, I mean, it's in the room and then try and wrap this up. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Andre Gouler, I live on, uh, North Lawrence Street. Um, first of all, I want to thank you all, I know this is a difficult, uh, challenge, trying to balance all, all of the different things that you're faced with in this, uh, decision. Um, I appreciate after the last, um, uh, town council meeting that you went back. You revised and incorporated a lot of the ideas that came out of the conversations along the way. Um, I'm happy to hear tonight that, you know, you're saying that if there is a master plan, that there will be a budget eventually to, uh, move this park project and the improvements forward. Um, I still feel a little conflicted on that because I think in many of the conversations that we've had up to this point, there's been this kind of dualistic, we're going to build it, but we can't promise when. Um, I think we have a better feeling that the solar would happen before the park. Um, and I don't feel like the neighbors feel really confident about any kind of a certain timeline for the park improvements. Um, I also appreciate, you know, that you did take those comments from the public into consideration with this new revised plan. But I'm also, on the other hand, saddened that there were quite a few comments saying, I support solar, but not in the park. Um, I appreciate the fact that there's a huge compromise to cut the footprint of the solar basically in half. I think that that's fantastic, but I agree with this layout, the way it's spread out, doesn't seem effective. And it doesn't, it, it's going to impact everybody on that viewpoint. Um, with the story polls have been put up, uh, in the morning and in the afternoons, you're going to have an eight foot wall of solar panels. And so I just, if the story polls are up there, it'd be great to have them on that south end so you could see the impact, the view impact along the whole corridor. Um, I think also from, I unfortunately wasn't able to make the last meeting, but I was able to watch, uh, uh, the recorded, uh, comments and then read, uh, the items that were included in the agenda today. Um, I, I found it interesting that in the beginning of this process, you connected with the, the community garden, the apiary, students and school officials, but you didn't reach out to the neighborhoods. We have two HOAs right next door, we would have loved to have been in on this conversation from the beginning. And maybe that would have taken some of the resistance and some of the, the challenges that have come out of this away. Uh, I still feel like, you know, we have to be honest that a two hundred and fifty kilowatt hour solar installation is industrial. This is, uh, you know, zone residential in the master plan. So that's a pretty big departure. Um, I think, you know, finally, um, you know, I also appreciate, appreciate hearing especially from Terry just now that there's other opportunities that could be more effective and affordable, uh, have been addressed um, and, and are in the works. I would love to see, uh, the town council really stick to your motto and really focus on being out, you know, think outside, find a way to make this, this happen, not in the park. That's all I would say.
Trace.
Uh, Tracy, all, three fifty-three County Road five, Ridgeway. Uh, thank you for hearing the community and finding a nice compromise. I know it means compromise doesn't make everyone happy, that's kind of the whole point of a compromise. I support this concept. Um, I feel like this is a piece of the solution, but we need to keep looking. As Terry said, this isn't the end of the story, there's a lot more pieces that need to happen. Um, a fifty percent cut to this, uh, project looks reasonable to me. Um, let's continue to look at other places where we can expand into locations. In, in perspective, this project is a hundred percent larger than the project that Wiley's talking about putting in at SMP. Um, I, I, I don't think that you should call this project a token or a one of SMP, it's just another piece of the puzzle. Um, I, I, thank you for the story polls, I really appreciate those being put up. Um, and I, I trust that they show the panels at their full height. Um, I, I, I would propose that I know we don't have enough, you know, we, we haven't gone enough into the budget to talk about what would be in the park. But I'd really propose that we, we talk about at least putting in some walking paths, um, when we do the panels, if, if this is what moves forward, because the, the walking path on the west side of the ditch is going to be lost by the panels. Um, I think that'd be a nice idea is to, to put in a nice, um, uh, gravel walking path. Um, as far as the south end of this, south end solution, um, I don't really get it. Uh, granted, I'm, I'm building across the street, so that would directly affect me, I'm going to put that out there. But it keeps me and says it's going to be closer to the industrial area. And I, I don't understand that because on the south of, of, of railroad is going to be a neighborhood. So i- it's not like it's connected to the industrial area, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, and it's also like a really shallow part of the, the park there. Um, I'm going to go back to, to Solar Ranch again and just say, why not a covered parking area with solar on it? That's a huge parking lot, let's, let's cover it and put a solar roof on it. Thanks.
Thanks, Trace. I, I just, in one response, I, I think it's important to keep making it clear that elevated solar over parking lots is probably three to five times more expensive, maybe even more than conventional ground mounted solar panels. Um, they're great looking, they're a great solution, they provide shape, but they're so much more expensive that they don't tend to be cost effective. Um, so that, that's, that's the reason that we're not talking about putting, covering the entire athletic park parking lot in solar, it's just, it's just no possible, we're not going to have a back end. Um, Scott, give, give one more comment and then we'll wrap it up. Thanks, everybody, for this patience, I know this is a tough conversation.
Uh, first, I want to thank the council and the town for working so hard on this. I really appreciate all the time and effort and whatever it is. Um, I personally, well, first of all, I live up in River Park, I'm near it over there. Um, I would agree with the prior speaker that this is a, um, a pretty good concept, reasonable concept. Um, I would like to say in response to Mr. Nisa's comments, and I usually agree with what he says, but not today. Um, we are the proud owners of a token solar installation on our road. And we're glad to be able to make that contribution, I think every, uh, contribution of solar energy really helps. Um, we generate more than we actually use, so our neighbors get to enjoy some solar power from time to time. But I do think this is a reasonable compromise, you know, for the community as a whole. And, uh, especially for the neighborhood up there, I mean, it's important that you keep in mind. Last week's, uh, presentations, which by and large were not in favor of a large solar installation. And I think perhaps people saw this, um, this revised plan and thought, well, gee, yeah, they've, they've got it right now. And they're not chiming in, um, to continue to support that expressly. So thank you, appreciate it.
All right, I think we need to take action. Bon, bon. Like one, one last comment, small, which is, I think, one of the most positive outcomes of this whole process is we've got a community in conversation. We didn't have this as a conversation piece a year ago. It's, it's, it's part of what makes Ridgeway special in my mind, is the fact that we can come up with ideas, we can hash it out, we can have our differences. But we're talking about what Wiley was mentioning, the idea that we're looking at a new energy transition based on forces out of our control of climate change, what happened with our water system. This is, you know, a time that a town can take leadership, uh, can look into the future and, uh, engage its community and have a positive, open discussion. And I think if anything positive has come out of this, even if we never put in solar, we've begun the conversation, I think that's very powerful. So I applaud the council and I applaud the community for, for stepping up and sharing their thoughts. Thanks, sir.
One aspect of compromise that we haven't brought up yet, um, a lot of community members have brought up concerns about funding and how do we get things built? If we don't consolidate the solar, now, now we're, I think that might kind of be our ultimate compromise here, right? We drop the amount of solar, if we can maintain a chunk of it as consolidated, then we bring down those solar costs. Which means we can, you know, in the overall budget picture, it's a whole lot easier to look at park amenities if we're not going after kind of this more, maybe more overall aesthetically gorgeous option. But it's going to be significantly more expensive. Um, so if we all say, we look at this concept and we like the amount of solar and we can compromise to that point, it would really encourage us to consider about consolidating it so that our solar can be a little more effective. And we can, and well, effective and for all of these things, let's decrease the complexity of the solar so that if we're going to make this park be multifunctional, that it's functional in all the ways.
I agree.
I have a quick question over there. Do we have any access to the, any of the power from the, um, from the reservoir on an emergency basis?
You, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that and it's not really relevant to the discussion, but.
I didn't know as far as bringing in.
I don't believe we do, because the, the power from the reservoir is in the form of what's called REPS. Um, and I think they've all been bought by Aspen, from what I understand. So I don't, you can't just like in an emergency say we want the power.
I didn't know if there was a knowledge.
Yeah, I don't believe it. Yeah, it's definitely outside the scope. But thanks, um. Other comments?
I think it's pretty, but I do agree with Sheldon, but pretty isn't. Yeah. I'm sorry, um, I do want to say that I do agree with Sheldon and also Kristen. Um, pretty is very good, it is a park, we absolutely want it to be beautiful, but consol- But consolidating on the south end, closer to the industrial park. I think is a better idea and a good compromise. No one's always happy. No one's always mad.
As a demonstration of various types of solar, this is a cool concept. Cost is a different issue. If we can continue to find grants, I think having one or more shade structures in the park would. You know, we could do yoga or have educational classrooms or kiosks. I think part of that needs to be maintained, maybe not as much. I mean, the, the community garden actually to be requested shade structure in the garden, the play area. The, the solar vertical fence was to block wind. Pretty cool. All these things are expensive, but. You know, money is money and, you know, in the scale, putting in solar, what Wiley talked about, what Tri-State's doing. Putting in a hundred megawatt systems at two cents a kilowatt hour is the most cost effective. The least cost effective is putting it on your house. This is something in between. So whenever you're looking at putting in solar, you have to make the choice of. By doing this because it's cost effective or by doing it because it's right or I want it. It's the same thing, same decision you make when you're putting in the swimming pool or upgrading the foyer, your, your dining room or whatever. You know, is it, can you justify the cost? Well, if you want it, justify it, right? If the town wants solar, wants to demonstrate it this way, then we just have to figure out how to fund. It's not, it, it doesn't have to be either or in this bunch of.
But it is going to come down to being either or with park amenities.
Yes.
Like, so this is, this is, it's, we can say we want it to be this way.
I mean, the boulder, the boulder wall is not cost effective. It's, it's just a cost.
Yeah, but I just, I, I really, I understand that. Um, however. We have a budget just like everybody else. And if we would like to do all the things. I, I think we can wrap it up and I know it's across from you. I know it's not ideal. But a simple like half block walk up and now you're in the contiguous park and it's, it's a hole. Um, I, you know, if we're really talking compromise. We're going to really be compromising in other ways when we come to making a budget. Or it's going to be compromised in terms of time to accomplish all of our park's goals. Um, or are we going to be compromising? Um, because we don't have solar because we didn't make anything happen. Because I can't assure you, Kristen, that if it doesn't go here, that it will go somewhere else because. It's just the start of the conversation and so far we haven't put it anywhere. So I can't look at you, those people who are psyched about Ridgway making moves and say, I assure you. Because who knows where it's going to be told no next.
I think I'm hearing some consensus for, um, going back to this company board one more time. And maybe staying, keeping the overall total solar in that. Two hundred to three hundred range or whatever range. But making it more cost effective by moving into. One contiguous area at the south end of the park. Um, even Andre was in favor of that, I believe. Um, so I. Is, is there consensus to?
Let's, let's sketch in the one in the community, the, the shade structure in the community garden. They asked for a shade structure. And if it doesn't get built right away for whatever reason. So that one sounded like the community garden was in favor. Am I, am I right on that? So if they're in favor of it, let's put it in the map. Yeah, we can.
Stacy's pointing at the cover, the education area as well, but.
So all, all of these were, came out of, um, input from the community garden that they like.
Because that might get us toward that twenty-five percent number we felt good about. And if those were advocated for by the garden, what, twenty-five percent? The decrease of twenty-five percent that John and I were not kind of, you feel good about that. So that's a first. So my thought with that is. If that area that exists kind of between the community garden and the apiary, um, I can take in community garden and put on that. Makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, that shade structure was in the, is smaller than it was in the. The preferred option from before. Um, we were liking this plan, so there's no reason to strike solar in a plan that we like.
I understand that, but I'm saying, I'm want to verbally say I'm okay with striking fifty percent like this one says. And so if you want to try to say focus on putting a, a more efficient thing on the south end. And that's the direction that the council says to do, okay, but I'm not saying.
So Josie, do you want to strike those solar there? No.
I'm saying, I don't know why you also need to have any more than on the south end to increase to the twenty-five percent reduction instead of fifty percent.
You see if I can put the needle, if we kept the solar that the, the community, the community garden requested, which is. Shade structure inside, the classroom structure and the carport, those are three cool demonstrations. Maybe even the solar fence, we take the remaining solar and consolidate it to the south.
Right.
Keeping the totals.
Yes.
This, this.
That's what I was thinking. We could be a little more ambitious.
I think we see the total be more like.
Three hundred?
Sixty percent, you know, three hundred kilowatt hour. Absolutely. That doesn't seem like that, that bad.
You can leave it on the restroom move too, wouldn't you?
Potentially, yeah.
It's just, it, you know, is that.
So it's a cool restaurant.
Well, and I was, I'm just kind of comparing the, I've got the, the last preferred alternative pulled up and that one. I'm actually looking for the restroom in it. So the rest, okay, so this is actually better because we have a restroom. Um, and the restroom is going to take up some space, so we may want to leave the restroom solar and. Use that, John, to get us closer to that number because then we would need to decrease the size of that array. A little bit more because that's a pretty good size area.
And it could just be over the restroom and not over the pond house. So you can get it spanning two structures.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, are you, you're against going from two fifty to three hundred?
Yeah, I don't, I, I feel like this is a better compromise going to the two fifty mark. Based on all of the feedback we heard at the last meeting and half the feedback we heard today.
I'm.
I think the, the main point is that half the.
It's like. Today was half and half. The last meeting was ninety percent against.
I disagree. Yeah.
Well. I don't know. I think that two fifty is still a big number.
So I was very much in favor for three to three fifty.
Three.
Three. I think three is, is kind of, is doable. Um, actually, one of the, to note, one of the things the feedback we did get was we need a bathroom. Um, and so the bathroom was added here, so that's kind of bonus solar for using that in my mind. And you can disagree with me all you want, but we do want a bathroom in the park. I think that's great. Um, again, the bathroom may not, if it don't run away, that piece of solar might not be there right away.
So if the whole concern is the cost of elevated solar in multiple places. What are we really changing by just moving the tracking solar panels on the side, just to a thing on the. So the idea is if you're saying, yeah, keep the stuff by the, you're, keep the stuff by the. Community garden, keep the stuff of the local carport, and I'll keep the stuff in the bathrooms. Really, you're saying keep all the high expensive elevated stuff that you said you were against, but now you're saying keep all that.
I am.
And move those tracking solar panels to the bottom.
Because here's, here's why.
Because that more cost effective.
I'm about to tell you. So if we take two hundred kilowatts and move it to the south as a unit. As a, a unit that could be built efficiently. As we start adding park amenities to the park, we can decide. Do we want to spend a little extra when we build a bathroom to add that component? Do we want, does this community garden want to go after a grant and add that solar component? So what I'm advocating for is in the mass, this is a master plan. Master plans in Ridgway don't get all built at once. So the idea is that we take. A significant chunk that if that was all we ever had in the park. We could look at it and say, we did a thing and we have a park. So if we took that two hundred and built it as a contiguous unit. And then I think it's part of Ridgway's budgeting processes. Prioritizing incorporating solar into as many things as we can. We go ahead and build an outdoor classroom. Let's incorporate solar. It's just, it's not taking the two hundred fifty, Josie, and scattering it through the whole park. It's saying, we're going to do two hundred altogether and get a, an outcome out of it. And if we can incorporate solar into the pieces as they go, we'll do that.
From a grant funding point of view, if we consolidate, let's just say two hundred kilowatts in one spot. That's an easier take down for SMP or like the ramp for. The other pieces of solar could be amenities in the park and just fund it as part of the amenities of the park. Just like.
So again, in the interest of keeping us moving, we could cut a whole bunch more on the agenda. We've got some people being very patient for the next item. Um, I think I sort of need, I, I'm feeling like there's a consensus that at least four. Maybe five of us are happy with the concept of going to two fifty to three hundred with. The, the tracking panels consolidated into one area down at the south end.
So if I can just jump in, I'll read my notes. I think it tracks with, uh, Stacy who's. So. Let's do nodding heads or shaking heads, uh, three hundred kilowatt. Uh, keep community garden shade structure. Community area structure, carport structure, uh, the restroom. Of course, the restroom, solar panels on the restroom, maybe not the pump house. We can, we can look into that. Consolidate on the south end. You know, I think this all tracks with what Stacy's drawing on there.
Yep.
Are there nodding heads for everything we just listed?
Yeah, but the consolidation is a little bit bigger because that is the main area is one hundred to one twenty-five. So we're looking more at that one fifty to two hundred range.
And she showed a tracking. Fix the ray kind of like. Originally shown in the middle. Yeah, further consolidate the south, more of the, the north part of the park. Rather than adding a tracking, or tracking are more cost effective in terms of kilowatt hours per square foot. But they take up more visual space. You can condense those back like the original ray that was close to the apiary. This is those fixed arrays. They're going to be more impactful to Stacy and Gray. But that one spot, but it would. And more trees. You can't put trees too close to the. But you can then solve, fix the ray with trees and pollinating garden underneath it.
Russ, I forgot to give you an opportunity to weigh in if you want.
No, I'm good. I, um. Kind of taking it all in. It's, uh, it's an interesting compromise. I kind of agree with, uh. Some of the previous comments that, in my opinion, last meeting, we had about ninety percent against. And this one's about fifty fifty. So trying to hit that right blend is, um. Not easy, I don't think.
This is all going to come back up when we have to budget it.
Yeah, yeah. And Shantel, I see you raised your hand again. Um. If you just have a short comment, um, we're, we'll kind of pass the comment period here, but I don't want to shut you down.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, just, I was just wondering if you could talk about what's next. If that's it, then, if that's at the next meeting, that's okay. I'm just thinking about what Mr. Meyer just said. You got most of the neighborhoods. To grudgingly accepting this new final design concept. And by kind of going back to the drawing board in this meeting, I think you probably have lost a lot of people. So I just kind of want to know what are the next steps?
I just, it's so interesting to, to have people have different takes on what they hear and see. Um, I mean. At least one of the very outspoken neighbors has said that he doesn't like this design because it puts. Visual impact to solar along the entire park. So I think, um, Beth's concept actually addresses that. It, it severely impacts the race, but it can be screened. Um, I, you know, it's, it's, it is a back, but there are a number of us that thought. That scaling back the four to twenty-five to maybe seventy-five or eighty percent of that was going to be. A fair compromise. So going to half of that seemed extreme. And again, it's from the standpoint of addressing our clinicals. I can't state it strong enough. And, and Sheldon stated it really well. If we don't do anything, we're not going to be able to play in the park in thirty years. Period. I think it's important that we understand that. And you can tell I feel really strongly about, um. I don't know that the area that Stacy is drawing as the southern end area. Needs to be that big, but we need to go back to the drawing board and figure it out. But I, there does seem to be consensus on council. It's not a hundred percent. I respect that. If we, we need to go back to the drawing board one more time. Treat things so that we get a little bit more than, than half of what we originally wanted and consolidate it so it's more cost effective.
So Mayor Mike, I don't get, thank you for that. Um, Shantel, to, to talk to your question, I, I attempted to lay it out at the forefront of, of this work session. Uh, looking for council direction tonight. I think we've largely gotten that subject to, to finalization. Uh, Super Bloom will, um, I wouldn't characterize this going back to the drawing board, but making modifications based on everything that's been stated. So that, uh, they can finalize the design concept, provide high level cost estimates for future budgeting purposes. So the town council can have those conversations each budgeting cycle, uh, as they try to prioritize the lists and lists of capital improvement projects. And other, uh, other projects that, that come up each year. Um, Stacy and her team will come up with the, the final three plan document. And that document will be, uh, adopted with, with the concept that's collectively agreed. Right now, we're looking at September eleventh, so that's the next regular town council, I think, September eleventh. So I think we can come, uh, at that meeting with, with all of that information. Um.
And we start budgeting for.
And then we. And we go through the fun stuff.
And we talk to your old friends at Dolph.
Uh, Shantel, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Greet this officially. All right. Thanks, everybody. Um.
Stacy, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you all. I mean, we're continually inspired by how committed the entire town is. To having this difficult conversation and, you know, I know that there's a lot of passionate people, so. Thank you for bearing with us on the process and, um, we're happy to, to keep, you know, working on it until we get it right.
Thanks you, thank you for bearing with us as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, talk to you guys later.
All right. What takes us to public protest and presentations I've been made. Uh, request for assistance to support local business owners. Again, I want to open it up and say thank you for your patience. You, you're seeing, no, come on, I'm sorry. I just want, I think you guys have seen the how this gets made, so.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you again for your patience.
Yes, thank you so much, everyone. Um, thanks for letting me speak on this tonight because I know this was added a little late in the game. Right. So, um, I'm just here really, uh, I want to make it brief because this is just the micro step into like a. Maybe a bigger plan. So tonight I want to discuss, um, a petition that we submitted into town. Uh, to have emergency signage, um, put up hopefully as soon as possible. Because the business sector, businesses are suffering in Ridgway. I think maybe if you take a look around, you might have noticed that there are a lot of closures. There are currently still quite a few empty commercial spaces that are, were rent. Um, I'm just going to kind of go over some petition points because. I think it says it kind of puts it well. Um, you know, there are overarching reasons. I know it's a. Crazy year. We, it's an election year. Let's just say that. Um, traffic doesn't help and all the construction. Um, generally speaking, I'd say most families and people in general have less to spend. Right? So we're going to see some decrease, but. When, and, and speaking with my peers and other business owners, and I'm going to continue with that because I'd like to have some better numbers personally. But I'm seeing, um, jumps to more of like, um, thirty to ninety percent de- decrease in. Business and profits for businesses in town. And then I also like to just point out, it's not just retail businesses, um, you know, the fact that we as a community don't have a pharmacy. You know, they left you an increase in rent. Um, I'm just looking around. I think we're at a tipping point right now. Because, um, just so everyone knows, I'm closing finally. It only took how many moves, right? Maybe I'll open up a moving company. I don't know. But, um. Yeah, and Tia is also closing. I know there's maybe a few other businesses thinking about it, but it's a serious matter. Uh, on a positive note, when I was speaking about this and sharing with my peers and, um, community members. The genesis of the revitalization committee happened and that's been very positive because it's been a good mix of people. Discussing these issues, coming up with, um, immediate actionable items and then also looking to the long term. So today I'm going to look at the micro action here. Uh, the emergency signage, I'd like town council to. Review and, um. Today I'm going to look at the micro action here. Uh, the emergency signage, I'd like town council to review and um. Allow us to lessen some of the restrictions as we did um after the COVID epidemic. Uh, it did work at that point because, you know, it says it did, you know, let me read into that. And um. We have an example of the signage that we're going to be using. Everyone involved and talked to the building owners. Everyone wants to do this. So. Uh, I know that you're just hearing me and you're not making a vote vote for this, but my question to you is, is do we have to wait till the next council meeting for the vote? Can we expedite this so we can get some of this traffic that's going to be just ending very soon when you look at the business season, you know? Um, so that's a question for you. Um, I'm also asking that. And this might be a next meeting as well, uh, but there was a two thousand fifteen adoption of a master wave finding signage plan. I was able to find that uh online and this helps uh direct tourists. Um, to stop, to park, to stay and um directs them how we want to direct them through proper signage and. You know, we need to think about this as far as budget for next year. And since it was already adopted in two thousand fifteen, maybe creating subcommittee, amending the master plan. Because clearly that was two thousand fifteen. We have new needs. We have um different things. So it's going to be a work in progress. But I just want you to consider that and ask as well. So. Um, let's see. One other thing, because other people, I think, want to just say a few things that are business owners are concerned. So. I mean, the true issue is not just the commercial sector or struggling business owners on their own. It's just one glaring symptom of a much larger problem because a thriving community um is all perks, right? So um, we're in danger, I think, of losing, you know, our identity, our quality of life for many community members and more. We don't preserve all essential assets and components. So we call ourselves a small town. Which is why we can talk to these meetings and take up everyone's time longer than they want. But, you know. Um, I think if we don't focus on that as we navigate our growth pace and all these things, um, then, you know. That's a that's a problem because a failing commercial sector is not a sign of a thriving. And um, if you look to budget numbers and tax dollars and whatever, I think it's a deeper thing than that. Because all you have to do is just drive down Sherman and just take a look. Adobe, empty. We Peter's still empty. These are iconic spots that drew people, you know, to town. We need to compel the tourism to stop because where our rents are right now, and I'm not giving crap to being overcharged. But, you know, the speculation, there's many reasons. It's multi-pronged, but the rents where they are now, if we don't have support. To promote the type of tourism that we want here, then more and more businesses will empty. And then then we have to ask ourselves, well, what are the zoning laws? What's going to move in there? We already know we're getting possibly another hardware store. So, you know, let's ask ourselves these questions as like also the further thought, like the far reaching thought here. Um. But yeah, I mean, I think everyone in every sector of the community should have the ability to thrive, not just some because a rising tide lifts all boats. And then um, I just want to say one last thing. I think as I think this emergency signage honestly is just like a simple actionable start. The sooner we get it done, I think the sooner that remaining businesses can feel a little safety net. And we talk about sustainability, right? Okay, well, what's the point of a community as, you know, no cute small business, you know, some small businesses, we have to empty out a full sector. Then do that bubble thing where everything crashes down. And then, you know, why do we have to enter into that? We when we are all talking about tonight in different aspects and sectors about sustainability, but we can do that right now. We can do an actual item that has worked in the past. And I'm just asking if we can just do it as soon as possible. So. Anyone else want to speak right now about this? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Angel.
I have an example of the signage too that we were proposing. We have people willing to pay for it, people willing to print them and building owners willing to hang them up for us. And there's different versions with different arrows. Depending on where they would go. We just need something to send people over to plant or the historic district or the creative district and we're all fading out. So. Um, I just wanted to come and say, my name is Tia. I lived in Ridgeway about three years ago. Um, and I worked at provisions for the first half of that time. And then I opened my sustainable and creative business in Ridgeway because I was so inspired by. These motives and that's what we're about. Um, and then both where in our historic and creative district, our main street. And now I'm currently closing my shop after watching provisions and many others close as well. Um, I saw sixty percent decrease in sales this summer compared to last summer. And I need everyone to understand I didn't even have proper signage yet last summer. I was a very new business. If my numbers were anywhere close to last summer, this wouldn't be a problem. That's a huge decrease. Um, and there there's no explanation for that. It was the building was still under construction when I opened, like there's. Just a decrease in tourism massively. Um, and. This isn't just happening to me. That would be one thing. As a new business, I could take that hit, but this is happening all around us to all of our small businesses um. That are not just hobby businesses. Um, and I think that should be really looked at. Um, a lot of that is obviously employment. We don't have a working class here anymore. Uh, that's just kind of the thing. Um, and this has been put pinned off onto the landlords. Um, and it is a rent problem as well. But I want to just speak on the fact that my landlord has been super awesome and accommodating, and he wants me to stay in that place. And it still isn't possible for me to. Um, so. And I just learned today that it's probably going to be our tenth real estate office opening up in the historic bank building. After I finished getting all of the local art out there. Um, so I'm just here to add to the plea of the remaining businesses to please expedite the signage. And like, we just want signs. To let people know we're here. That's all. So thank you.
Thanks, Tia. Anyone else?
John Chismaire, Mr. Terras. Local five car plane. Um, I just was um part of the fuse group and also part of the revitalization group here. And um, I also have a couple of other hats because people kept calling in and asking if I could say thank you to them. So um, some of this is kind of a culmination of of several different people. But um, there has been a real drop in um. Activity in the western slope. Uh, for example, Cisco has been flat. And they said the only day that was memorable was July fourth. Uh, Pepsi has been flat also. They have new customers, but they are still very flat. There's been no increase in any of their sales. Um. Um, I pushed our numbers just to see at the branch museum. And we're down about twenty-one percent from last year as far as um traffic through the door. Um, and I was also told that um, Euraeus is facing the twenty to thirty as well. They just aren't talking about it as much, but um, but also they're noticing. You know, families that do come um are bringing all of their picnic baskets and stuff out of the car. They're not eating at the restaurants. They're they're bringing their food here. Um, so that's also another issue. There's also an incre- a slight um. Um, interest, um, the interest rate has gone up a little bit, but the costs have also gone up. Um, that was another thing that someone wanted me to bring up. Um, I was just going to mention, a lot of it is the our traffic to our area. Um, John and and Tara and some of us and. Um, Ariel and I found out going to Pueblo, you know, after fifty closed, how long it takes to get there. Um, it's about seven and a half hours. We had a friend of the family that came to visit. Um, and dropped uh southbound and went um to through Cogosa Springs to Durango to come to visit this last weekend. And then Sampa was doing all the telephone calls above Silverton that they had to turn around, go down to Cortez. And so it was like an eight and a half, almost nine hour drive for this person to just um and visit this weekend. And we didn't anticipate the telephone calls. So um, there's, there's an awful lot of um. Difficulties and and roadblocks literally uh to get to our community at the moment. And so anything that we can do to assist in in supporting our businesses. I think would be wonderful.
Thanks, Charles. Erin, you're next.
Thanks. I'm Patty, County Commissioner. Although I haven't been participating as a county commissioner, but I'm interested in the visual. Um, I just wanted to say that this group, this ad hoc group that came together, I haven't witnessed anything like it since the bottom. Conversations that happened during the Great Recession. And we had at that point a real difficulty. We had something like thirty-six percent of our revenues cut through the recession for local government. We had half of our families employed in two different industries. And so everything was either, you know, unemployed or partially unemployed to the fact. To a point of extreme pain. The situation that's going on with the businesses is not even necessarily unique to Ridgeway. Um, my daughter, twenty-two years old, had to give um an entire restaurant in Boulder five days' notice that the owner was closing it. Um, pretty, pretty wild experience for a twenty-two year old um to go through that and be the face of that closure. Restaurants are down across Colorado for various reasons. But this group noticed that Ridgeway um took a unique approach to COVID. Um, to spur um in economic activity. And that was a temporary, um, an emergency ordinance. I think it was signed by the mayor. That um, I don't know if the right word was repealed or amended, the town sign code. We cut to spur economic activity in trying to. And then it was extended again um in twenty twenty. And I just wonder if that's something that could help this group who's come together. Um, have a little light in the tunnel, especially for the summer and fall season and for those businesses that are still struggling.
Thanks. Erin, you want to speak?
I'm Erin Grant, my own Ridgeway office supply. And I'm just coming with short remarks that we too have struggled. Uh, we we had to raise our prices this year just to keep afloat and understanding, understandably, there's cost of living. But at the same time, like, I can't keep, I can't keep my services affordable for the community if I have to keep raising it to stay afloat. And I'm also just speaking on behalf of these other small businesses. I've been participating in this ad hoc group. And signage is just the first of many things that we could be, but the most basic thing that we really need to help keeping the, keep these. Struggling businesses going because I offer some vital services and I can't keep afloat much longer. If if it continues going like this. I mean, I'm I'm surviving on loans and different things. And although I'm raising prices, I. I just am putting that out there as well that I've seen it as well. And I just wanted to speak up that it's something that we really need assistance. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Erin.
So what is the rule for how quickly we could address the signage?
Well, I was just looking at this side code and um, I mean, unfortunately, government does not move fast. Um. A actual ordinance change would take technically two months. Um, the emergency ordinance could be done in thirty days.
Emergency ordinance would be effective immediately, but it would, but we would have to get it. It wasn't, there was no notice emergency ordinance this evening.
Right.
I I suspect.
No, it was not. It wasn't noticed. That was what I tried to convey.
It wasn't included in the packet in the agenda as a as an emergency ordinance. I I suspected if the council was looking for a middle ground, you you could direct staff to work with the the business owners. To um try to um. Ignore some of the side code enforcement.
That's exactly.
With with so so staff working with the business owners to address these concerns and then to bring back. Um, an emergency ordinance at the next regular or special council meeting.
My my thoughts were similar, but a little bit, a little bit different. Um, I was really struck by the the two thousand and fifteen wayfinding code. And I already talked to Preston. He's added it to the, we're all good. We'll be looking at it in the future. But I I've started now walking around town. Thinking about our signage as I don't live here.
Yeah.
For the first time ever. Um, you know, and I just noticed something. But and so I would be in favor of doing. Something in the interim while we evaluate what we're doing. Because if you're coming from Telluride, you've got the sign that says began historic district. It says town hall and parking. Like, yeah, we'd love people to park here. We've got library parking, and I can't remember what else is on that sign, but it doesn't say like shopping and dining and point towards Plin Street.
Yeah.
Um, another thing I've thought of is I've driven into small towns where the main street isn't the main street. And it's like at our sign way up as you're coming down the hill from Telluride, visit our creative main street. But you know, get Clinton one block north, you know, that those type of things.
Yeah.
And those are bigger dollar investments in some of those signs. Um, and I know there's some concerns about prioritizing businesses over one. And so I don't know.
Well, and the other open room, which I mentioned at the one business meeting I went was able to go to. Um, is C dot because we have, we're on a state highway. The car department inspection has a lot to say about what's allowed. On signage that you can see from a car on a state highway. And so, I mean, we, part of it is we could do things and then just. Wait and see whether they know.
So, so, yeah, I think, I I mean, I think the the deal is right. Is staff needs to see what is possible because COVID really was unprecedented. We see economic rises and falls, and I don't want to sound unfeeling, but that is, that's a reality. Um, a global pandemic really was like, we got away with stuff with C dot that I'm not sure we will now. Um, but I, you know, I do think. Long term sustainability is like, how do we really orient people? Why is the map on Clinton Street every street in town? I watched a tourist walk up and look at it and I could see the wheels turning and then they just walked away. So like, I, those are, those are the types of things that I feel like town in the long haul would support you.
Yes.
But in the short term, how do we get some temp signage just to acknowledge that maybe we're not doing as good a job as we thought?
I I will also throw out just um from my years of experience in local government. Um, signage tends to, not not to say that we don't need directional signs pointing people to Clinton Street to our historic main street. But signage is tricky. People don't see it. People are so focused on their phones right now. Hope all of you with local businesses have taken your Google Maps listing and taken ownership of it. Verified yourself with Google so that you can get traffic from that.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I I assume you all have.
Yeah.
Listen to what Beth just said.
I I know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not discounting that. I'm just saying it's a bigger picture now where.
But I have visitor center guide out right now. That has my wrong address. So tell me, tell me how that helps.
I I understand. I understand. And that is because you moved probably right when the visitor guide was being published.
Okay, I understand. So may I ask one more question? The signs were designed with C dot in mind, just so you know. Um, what we, what we did here as far as in the buildings that we asked, because there's a plan of basement for these emergency zones. Just so you know, so we're just asking.
Yeah, no, and I I think both idea that that you guys get together with Preston and the building inspector. And see what sort of creative solution you can find for some immediate action. And we'll move from there with an actual ordinance change.
I'd like to offer another suggestions.
I'd like to offer another suggestions. So you mentioned the word sustainability. I think I'm the only one here enough that's on the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Yes.
And I like the idea of incorporating business sustainability, the concept of sustainability.
Yes.
So I would suggest um you come through me or Dave Jones, who's the chairman who's here. Let's get this topic into discussion on Sustainability Advisory Board as a topic. And, and to work with you, your ad hoc group, to see how we can link these two concepts. Because sustainability is a broad.
Encouraging sustainable. And that is not just green, it's not just because, it's, it kind of reflects the towns. All aspects that are involved outside and the people that live there, not just.
I agree, there's a lot of synergies between what you're looking to do and what that board is intended to look at.
Thank you.
I like Bo's idea of um maybe working with town staff to get signs up immediately and also getting signs up that will be sustainable for the long run. Because Clinton Street is an incredibly integral part of our community. And I am deeply saddened about the closing.
And I, and I don't have any solutions on the empty storefronts, but it is something that I can ponder. Like, we don't have an immediate lever to pull here at town to force people to. But it is something that to, to process and, and try to come up with some solutions. Um, you know, we haven't traditionally offered any sort of carrots to do anything. Is that really an option? Is it going to pay out of the long haul? And there's, there's, but those are those type of things in addition to um. I know everyone's busy, but I encourage you to join the board of the chamber because I know that Tia stepped up and did that. Um, but really making sure we're, and Mishi did as well. Oh, Mishi, yeah, Mishi's not here, I was looking at Tia. But like really trying to make sure that our chamber board reflects the diversity of businesses. So it's not one sector over another is really key. Because that's where your town marketing dollars live.
Exactly, that is true. They do live there.
Yeah.
They do. And I um just have to say that thank you for listening to all of it. Just like, I've done a lot of research for other towns, probably wayfinding.
Yeah, I'd love to sit down and look at what you found.
I can send you everything. Okay, but the revitalization committee is actually the peers of businesses that are doing things right now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which is, if anyone wants to join, it's Thursday, February morning.
Going back to my work, I didn't come.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to add? We, we hear you, we empathize, we understand. It's, it's definitely happening everywhere, but there are things we can do. And we want, I mean, of course, we want to support the business community, this, this Ridgeway, our community. Um, so hopefully we can find some solutions and make some changes as quick as possible. Hey, Jared?
I'm Karen Wick, of course, it's Clinton Christmas Street. And also owner of Christmas Cafe on Clinton Street. Um, I took leave from my position at town over the summer because of struggles my family was having with our newly opened business on Christmas Street. I just want to, I just want to echo as a kind of citizen and business owner, the validity of the concerns of the business owners. I'm sure you weren't questioning that, but just want to hear my support behind that. Um, also recognize, ask Preston to, as business owner, declare that the, the trees that had overgrown are one directional signage that points to a town hall parking on the businesses. Um, so I just, I really want to underline the importance of these immediate requests. And then also I want to just briefly speak um in my role as, as a town staff member and the Fuse Committee and just remind us that the, we have resources that we can access. Fuse is our creative, is the creative district, but also our Main Street program. Um, there are, there are resources on the state level around how to handle vacant storefronts. That directional signage um plan was probably produced, um, was before my time, was probably produced through that program um with support from um DOLA. So just remind, remembering our state partners, remembering the program that we have in place um that works hand in hand with the chamber to help support the vitality, the economic and social vitality of downtown. And that, that program could be leveraged to greater effect, I think, if we chose. That's it.
Thank you.
If you want to add, I, I, not to toot my horn, but I did write a letter of paper talking about shopping local and sell that. Um, I think we all need to, as community members, remind our friends and neighbors that shopping on Amazon doesn't do a damn thing for our local community. And now is a critical time for people to start thinking about that.
We're very supportive of local. It's not the, the locals that, I don't. Locals have been very, very open and diverse.
Good.
But thank you, that is one hundred percent.
That hasn't historically always been the case.
Yeah.
I would just throw that out. It's good, good to know.
I love that, I love that. I love that you reminded.
I also wanted to mention one thing that we were going to bring in is that we were going to be, um, we've talked to see as far as doing banners down sixty-two, kind of identifying Ridgeway as a town and some of the, some of the amenities. And so I think that would tie in with Terry's group as well as far as sustainability. Um, so I'll teach you some information on that.
Great, sounds good. Hillary, yes. Oh, Hillary, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Hillary Lukowitz. I live on North Laura Street. And I'm also the Director of Destination Development at the Colorado Tourism Office. And I just want to let you all know that we are, you know, aware and working in the background to try and find any type of support that we can at the state level. And that also Ashley Perkins at the Ridgeway Chamber has done a fantastic job of being awarded a Destination Blueprint Program through the Colorado Tourism Office to also support strategic planning around tourism and marketing. So I think there's a lot of great work that's, you know, happening. And obviously it, it does take time and that's unfortunate. But I think continuing, as Tara um mentioned, is just looking out for those state resources and supporting the chamber um and, and being consistent with that is so important. Because when we do stop marketing and, and focusing on that strategy, we do feel that. And so it's just important to have that continual strategy to move forward. And I'm excited to be working with you all and also to be a, a resident of Ridgeway to, to support that. So thank you.
Thanks, Hillary.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks so much. We'll um hope we can get some things done ASAP.
So what will be my next step?
Preston.
Uh, me with Preston and or like.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be in touch. Uh, plan on tomorrow, trying to figure out how to get my water back on. But at the same time, I need to talk about the sign you all developed, uh, and what the plan of that is. Exactly, mentions, how you deploy it, how it means, what we're talking about here, so.
Of course, so whenever you think wants.
Yeah, I would say you've got a, a plan all together, send it to Preston by evening, and we'll get back to you as soon as you can. Thanks for being here and thanks for patience.
Thanks, yeah. How you doing?
Still going. Hey, it's been eight out of twenty, it's going great.
We're not even halfway. Um, item number nine is request for use of rightsway for the annual Noel Night event. Yeah, Mishi's name on it, but I'm guessing that's.
All right, and Mishi unfortunately is going to be here tonight. Her son is going off to college tomorrow, so I told her I would take over and kind of give just um the presentation on behalf of the street permit for the closure for New Orleans. So thank you for having us. And thank you for all those helping with the, being here tonight. We really do support you and we did a lot of things for the one that I'm bringing. I hope everyone can join us on Tuesday during your presentation at the decor room in regards to Ridgeway approaching, um, Ridgeway Local Bucks program, potentially nearing the launch of local bucks opportunities. So uh, stay tuned Tuesday, the twentieth at five-thirty. So come see us at the decor room, thanks. Uh, do you have the application, do I have the application up to kind of go over? Okay, sorry, this is the first time I'm kind of just talking to you guys on my presentation. Um, so yeah, the street permit is just basically use of a driving way for the parade. Um, historically, we have learned that uh we had to go through the process. Um, first we use them through CDOT, like you're saying. Um, but to close five-fifty uh would be our first request to start the parade around five, five-thirty. And then heading, sorry, sixty-two? Oh, yeah, sixty-two, sorry, thanks, I appreciate that. I was like, five-fifty feels, five-fifty seems a weird, like, yeah, it seems extreme, yeah. Okay, so yeah, basically you can parking at the parking lot out here. Uh, turning right on Red Road Street and heading up sixty-two, West Lincoln Sixty-two, North to Laura Street, bless you. No worries. Um, north on, north on Laura, then east on Clinton, up two blocks. And then back south on Lena, we didn't do that last year, so we're hoping to do that this year. Um, and then potentially using, utilizing a P A system for Christmas carols and potentially let's just steep or tree lighting. So that's kind of what our application explains and.
Right.
I don't know.
Anybody have any questions to ask about this?
I think it's great, we're starting now.
I know, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, that's great. I, I know someone who's a friend of Santa's probably is telling me about this.
Is Santa on board?
My only question, this helper is, yeah. I'm only staged as usual at like the town hall parking lot or the parking lot by the park and then come out along the highway. You're not going to stage out on the highway.
Oh, no, 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 no. Again, her manager, Mishi, I just talked about she will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, that's gather vehicles, that parking lot on the street. Yeah, this looks good to me, I'm most grateful, stoked about it. Um.
We're planning to keep it to one evening this year, but we've already started the subcommittee process. So any feedback, totally welcome. And yeah, like I said, part of the, our desire to go for the Ridgeway Local Bucks potential project is to coincide with Noel night, so that people will be incentivized to buy the good cars to use at Noel night during the holidays to help, especially with the offbeat seasons.
Right.
We're here trying, so.
Great idea, that's great.
Anything else?
Any comments, questions in the audience or online? Any non, somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the application for a special use permit to the Ridgeway Area Chamber of Commerce for Noel Night. Second?
Sure, by Polly, seconded by Josie. Vote call vote please. Cam's not here, so.
Uh, Councilmember Bradley. Councilmember Croker. Mayor Proten Meyer.
Hi.
Uh, Councilmember Scoville.
Hi.
Councilmember Lincoln.
I am.
Councilmember May, and Councilmember China.
Scott.
Scott.
Make sure you hold pressure.
This top fifteen is there.
Thanks, Paul, way to step in. Thanks, everybody, thanks, Ashley.
Thank you guys, very much.
So all right, that takes us to public hearings, our two public hearings for tonight. First one is item number ten, extension request to meet conditions of approval. Preserve P U D preliminary plan. Location Sabbath subdivision, part of Alon A and Woodford Edition. Address TBD, candidate number twenty-three, Zoners Central, owner Dowling Group LLC. Preston?
Certainly. So uh, to start, I'll say it a couple of times, this is a public hearing. I do cite him, it's quasi judicial in nature. I'm going to read a little bit, it's uh, a lot of background in the staff report. I certainly hope you all have taken some time to go through all of that. Uh, but I'll cover some of it. Before you, this uh, extension request for preserve P U D preliminary plat approval that was initially granted on, in March of twenty-eighteen and subsequently extended in March of twenty-twenty, January of twenty-twenty-two. And most recently, this last February, uh, the extension, if approved, would allow the applicant more time to meet the conditions assigned with the preliminary plat approval. So this last February, the request from uh the applicant was a three-year extension to the preliminary plat approval. Uh, council elected to approve a six-month extension as recommended by staff to allow additional time for staff of the applicant to discuss the annexation and preliminary plat processes. The current expiration date uh for the preliminary plat approval is uh September eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, so about a month's time. Uh, but the owner is now requesting, or again, requesting a three-year extension to the preliminary plat approval, meaning the owner would have an additional three years to meet the conditions assigned with uh the approval from March fourteenth of twenty-eighteen. Uh, the owner and their development team have uh struggled, you could say, to meet certain public improvement requirements specifically related to the sanitary sewer system. Uh, there's a lot more background in the staff report, as I was mentioning. After a number of conversations and meetings between the development team, uh, town staff, evolved town council, county staff, uh, maybe O C C. It was determined that the best course of action was for the property where the proposed station would be located uh to be annexed to the town. So the town's sanitary sewer infrastructure can be located within the incorporated limits of town. Uh, since the property is outside of the urban growth boundary, the first step in the process was to amend the future land use map to the three-mile plan to include this area so that the annexation petition can be filed for the property. Uh, we're not too far away from that whole process being uh completed. So in November twenty-twenty-three, and after following the entirety of the master plan amendment process, the development team requested council approval to amend the future land use map and therefore the urban growth boundary, the initial growth boundary in the three-mile plan to include the portion of the property south of the preserved P U D property. It's located between Cali River twenty-three and the Uncle Pogary River. Uh, the area that's sufficient to locate the required infrastructure for the preserved P U D development. Uh, additionally, the development team requested that the future land use classification of single-family neighborhood, uh, as you can find in the master plan, be applied to the property and the property be located within both the initial growth boundary and the urban growth boundary. Council approved that amendment. Uh, on January tenth, the development team made a request to the council to include a small sliver of town property that's part of the athletic park parcel and currently outside of the town boundary, which is kind of wild. Um, in their upcoming annexation application, council authorized the inclusion of the property. Not too long ago, about a month ago, July nineteenth, the development team submitted formal annexation and zoning map amendment applications to the town. Those materials have been reviewed and deemed complete. Uh, the review only verified that sufficient information was submitted to complete the review of the application materials. Uh, TJ and his crew at CPS are now in the process of reviewing the materials, processing the application in accordance with uh the code requirement, the Ridgeway municipal code requirements. It is worth noting that a large section of the property falls with, excuse me, within the Uncle Pogary River overlay district, Yorah. That's a lot of books now, right? Uh, the property is not currently subject to the Yorah's Federal Board or Development Regulations. Uh, ordinance eighteen oh one, amending the town's official zoning map to provide for the Yorahic rating, uh, River Corridor Development Regulations was adopted in March of twenty-eighteen, shortly after the initial preserve P U D preliminary plat approval uh in March of twenty-eighteen. So at the end of the day, staff is requesting a two-year extension for the applicant. Uh, and with all that said, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, the applicant is uh, is here to speak on the application, thanks for your patience. Uh, and uh, reminder, this is a formal vote.
I have several questions.
As, as such, we'll start out with um council able to ask staff questions. Um, and that's completely, I let the applicant um speak. And then when they're done, we'll open it up to all of the county.
Uh, so I don't, I've never actually looked at the annexation application. I'm a little bit confused why it took seven months to file the annexation application, having been told that this was a final uh extension? So I, I don't know.
That's, that's a question I have as well.
That was also a question I have. Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a question for the applicant, but.
Do I need? Oh, and then, and then why is staff's recommendation two years? Because when I looked at these, they, they submitted, so regardless of why it took so long, they submitted in early July with a three to six month application review time. And then what, they'll have to do a new subdivision plat, and they're going to submit that in August with a three to six month application review time. So I'm not sure why this isn't a year, why, why the two years?
Yeah, uh, great question. Uh, TJ and I have conferred a few times about what staff's recommendation would be in light of the three-year requests, you know, the second three-year request. And, you know, we feel collectively, I don't want to speak for TJ, but I feel like I can, based on our conversations, uh, that the applicant or the development team has made, you know, some, some pretty big strides to get to this point, considering um the, the issues with locating sanitary sewer infrastructure, uh, going through the master plan amendment process, uh, and then having to go through um some, some pretty cumbersome processes for, for annexation, uh, subdivision, submittal, stuff like that. So uh, at the end of the day, we felt comfortable. Uh at the end of the day, we felt comfortable uh at the staff level with the two-year uh extension, just given the. Momentum and, and the efforts that have been made. Uh all in an effort to, to meet the original conditions of the preliminary plat approval dating back to twenty eighteen.
I guess I, if we've got momentum, I don't know why it's gonna take two years, and then, like, is there any way without? This kind of process question, is there any way without requiring an entirely new preliminary plat to? Not put unnecessary burden on the applicant, but if. The River Overlay District was passed in March of twenty eighteen, we've now done. The re-preliminary plat extensions, this would be the fourth since then, like at some point. How many times do you get to just renew and then not be subject to new regulations that are passed? Um especially considering we've had this come up with people moving in and out of the area and. Extensions aren't noticed in the same way that original preliminary plats are passed, like. And, you know, is there some way that they could incorporate some of the? Uh overlay districts things without a whole new preliminary plat?
To your point, how many times do you get to renew, I think it's wise to give enough of a buffer so we don't look at this again a year.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I'm, our time is our time and it's our job to like review things, and I, I don't think we should be granting. Extensions, five-year, ten-year extensions, because I think it needs to remain a public process, because as things change in town. Things that would have served, you know, we, we dealt with this with River Park. The, the, not River Park, but the industrial park area.
Yeah, it's, it's always tricky trying to find the balance between incentivizing action and giving them adequate time. But I, my question to follow up on Beth's. Would applying the U-Rod to this subdivision require a new plat? Wouldn't necessarily. Or do you think it?
Hmm, well, there'd be a whole different set of uh of standards that it would need to meet, I think it would. Change in some ways substantially the configuration of.
Of lots?
Of the lots.
Yeah.
Actually, that's an applicant for, excuse your question about.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, it, not necessarily, but, but the new regulations would, would probably. So I don't know that under the town regs, it would require the generation of the new preliminary plat. But practically it would based on the, the overlay district coming into play.
Okay.
And one last thing I wanted to talk to, because it came up earlier, I've got a two-year recommendation piece. Uh you know, with that whole host of conditions that need to be met. Construction of the infrastructure and public improvements would need to be met at the end of that two-year work. There is some infrastructure, there are some pieces that have gone in, um and have been in for quite some time. All that would need to meet current standards, uh and then all the, you know, there's a whole host of items that need to go into, and so it's. It's uh. I just want to make sure that's not lost, I mean, that's, that's a lot of construction for public infrastructure such in order to get to the. Plat stage.
Okay, may I ask?
Those are my questions, my questions were kind of covered by you and Beth, those are good. Your odd and.
All right, good evening, Chris Hawkins with Outland Planning, seven thirty Sabata, um first on the two-year extension. Um ideally, we've already been under construction, but in twenty twenty-two, we went in front of the Board of County Commissioners with what we thought was a simple. How do we meet these conditions as drafted, and the Board of County Commissioners. Uh did not like the way the conditions were drafted and instead pushed forward to annexation. And so that was just two years ago, and so that set us off on this path of having to meet. All these other conditions now, including the master plan amendment, and then submitting for the annexation. Um Delmont, and it, it does take time to get the plans together. And so I think probably about three months ago, we got our first draft of the plat. Um and then we put the application together and got it submitted as quickly as we could, so that explains the timing of it. I felt it was pretty fast from the time we got it together, from the time we got the council's approval to include this land. And to go forward, but in all honesty, um Dowdy has the money to do this, it's just sitting there and they're just wanting to get. The, the extension in place before they spend a lot of money trying to meet the conditions. It just, this, the chicken is getting the entitlements together again. And they haven't been fully entitled since the Board of County Commissioners. Basically said, no, you can't go this way, you've got to go a completely different direction, and so. That's the main reason for this request overall, and there has been an extensive amount of work out there on that property. Between the sewer lines, the water lines, the gas lines, uh grading work was huge, millions of dollars spent. Um and, and that's why we're really arguing for this, I, I think the extension absent the. U-Rod is no different than what's been going on at River Park for, and they've asked for more extensions than we have by far. Um so I, I don't want, we're not gonna win that race, um we know we're, we gotta get going on this. If you apply the U-Rod to this, it would completely obliterate all the lots out of this development. I'm afraid at, at that point in time, I know our attorney's online, I know he has an opinion on that a little bit, but. We're just trying to get this thing done, cleaned up, there is an affordable housing component. There's a recreational path component, there's housing here that brings more people to the community, which we apparently need for businesses. So it is a good project overall, um there's also been some wetland restoration that's been done out there. Like Alwini and a lot of time money spent on this, so we expect the request. And agree with the two-year extension, don't have any problem with that, fully understand that. And the reason is because we're not gonna be able to get going until next spring, obviously, with a general contractor. Best case scenario, we're done fall, worst case scenario, it will be the spring. And so we're just trying to build a buffer in, because then we have to put together the final plat application and get it submitted. And there'll be two final plots that come in, so that was part of it along with the state, uh. What was it, Public Department of Health, setback changes, which forced the relocation of the live station, so. We feel we have a lot of good reasons for opposing the extension, we hope you agree with us, so, thank you.
Michael, do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Okay, um, you want to pair of comments, questions for the applicant?
I think the two-year extension makes sense, things take longer than I do.
I'm not gonna take out my gripes about our preliminary plat extension process on you guys, I just have gripes about our preliminary. Process.
Me too.
We're gonna talk about it at some point, yes.
All right, we also have comments, questions for the.
No questions for us, that's.
Uh is there any, I will open it up for uh public comment?
Yes, I do. I'm here, I'm Tanya Ishikawa, and I'm here representing Uncompahgory Watershed Partnership, um. We appreciate that the town has taken a lot of care with sanitary sewer, sewer system, and I guess probably the county as well. That's really important for our watershed, um especially that development being so close to the river. Um we are concerned, however, that it doesn't have to um apply to the U-Rod at all. I know, I understand the timing of how it happened, but with so many extensions, I agree with that, that um. It would be nice at this point to have at least, um, yeah, at least some consideration of those requirements. Um and here's four reasons why. Um the development is immediately adjacent to a very active multi-channel reach of the Uncompahgory River. This year alone, channel configurations upstream from Ridgway and in town have changed significantly with growing threats to existing infrastructure. And also, the more restricted the flood plain, the more instability can be expected downstream. Especially as the river flows through its urban corridor. Throughout the reach, under consideration, easily erottable banks are a characteristic feature. The likelihood of channel migration is a major concern, and more so as flooding events become more accentuated in the future. Also, the high watermark line on the available plat map should be resurveyed, resurveyed as soon as possible. There is no survey date specific on the existing map, we have had. Um some significant flow events since last spring, eight to ten feet setbacks from a high watermark. Along a rated channel flow regime are likely inadequate. And it looks as if much or most of the Rikerian plant habitat on the west side of the river will be eliminated by the development. Um so what are the ramifications of this, especially in a highly dynamic flow regime? Um as described above, riverbank stability is already precarious in that reach. Um and just something I thought of, that was, a lot of that was from my board members helping me with the technical language. Um and uh, you know, one thing I thought as I read it, is I haven't looked back at the map my, myself. Um um in great detail, but graduate, instead of just retaining wall, for instance. Um which likely wouldn't work at all in this spot, it would definitely need to be graduated levels of retaining. And, and moving away from the river based on all of that. And as we saw with what happened with your ditch, um and the river there, I mean, there's. Likelihood of our rivers flooding, um being a problem, so. Um, yeah, so we just like all of those things to be paid attention during the approval process of this.
Thanks, Tanya. Still any public comment online? See if he hands up. All right, I read into a motion.
Can I stop? Is that allowed?
Yeah.
Do we have any other?
At first, tell me, I'm gonna close the public.
Sorry.
Portion of me, not up to deliberation. Which you can, I still.
We have any other preliminary plats outstanding in the U-Rod? Are we creating a press that like, you know, if we were to change our process, did we just allow something to continue? No, I can't think of where we would, but.
Not within the U-Rod, I, I think this is the only.
No, I, I think we get a couple, one or two other ones out there, but nothing in the U-Rod.
Okay.
And I was just gonna throw out that, um, you know, whether or not we, we wanna apply the U-Rod to this. Tanya made some good points about resurveying, I mean, after all this time resurveying by watermark. Um dressing misses, and I'm sure you guys appreciate this as much as. Yeah, that already.
We'll, we'll share that with the preliminary plat for the annexing area with the whole of the subdivision, so you can see.
Yes, one question to the applicant? Or no? I'm sorry, I thought of a question while Tanya was talking.
Okay, I, I reopen the public comment and council wants to ask the applicant a question.
What's your plan? She wants to sleep in. I do.
Thank you for the very close question. Michael Cox, six-one-five-four, County Road twenty-three, uh Downland Grove. Uh so our plan is to hopefully get through this, uh I mean, my God, I've been at this a long time. And, you know, I really appreciated your questions and, and a lot of these things have been addressed in the past, you know, that. The river actually had a, an army board permit uh for a side channel on a lot of the wetlands and stuff. So we've, we've actually gotten that closed out already, um we just had the, the high watermark resurveyed recently. Um and I believe that's in our submittal. Um so, yeah, our goal is to kind of get through this, get, hopefully by the end of this year, we can have. All the things that need approved, approved, and all the drawings done and the surveys that need to be done, completed. Because at the end of the day, we don't know how much this costs. Uh you know, I've, uh, since we saw you last. I've spent fifty thousand dollars on plans and paperwork and such, and. And I've budgeted two hundred thousand dollars more to get us to the end of this year, so that we could understand. How much does this even cost? I, I have an idea of, you know, how much the lots sell for, I know how much we're into the property. For right now, uh but I don't even know how much this costs, so. Um the goal is to find all those things out, get it all done, and then get to building, hopefully, you know, by the spring. Right, we, if we can get all this information together by the end of this year, well, then there's a proposal system, right? Of getting uh requests out to people, so that's, doesn't happen overnight either, so, you know. I, everything takes time, and this has been one heck of a process. And it's been great, because Preston's been very helpful in making sure that the process gets created. As we go, because a lot of this process didn't even exist. So, you know, that's, that's my plan. Any other questions?
I think I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll close the public comment again. And, anyone else have any more thoughts? I'll move to approve an extension to the Preserve P U D preliminary plat. Sub subdivision part of Outlaw A and the Woodford addition for a period. Two years, making the new expiration date September eleventh to twenty-six. With the conditions assigned, it's the March fourteen, twenty eighteen approval, and to allow up to two years to meet those conditions. Second. Made by Terry, second by Kevin, vote call vote please.
Councilmember Scrambley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Bacon.
I'm Skyler.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Mayor Proten Meyer.
Aye. All right, passes unanimously, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, that takes us to our second public hearing of the night, emergency ordinance number O-two, twenty twenty-four. Emergency ordinance, it's an emergency. Acting by Intuit's Water Enterprise, approving loan from Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority to finance portion of costs of ductile iron pipe replacement project. Authorizing loan agreement, a bond to document the loan, providing for payment of the loan from net revenue to the water system. And declaring emergency. Preston.
I mean, that was pretty much it, just in the title. So before you, it's an emergency ordinance, it's needed to uh for the town to enter into a, a loan agreement. With the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority so that they can issue a loan. Onto the town for the ductile iron pipe replacement project. Uh the loan will be in aggregate, it's full amount, not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh will bear an interest at a fixed rate of three point two five percent. And shall be payable semi-annually and mature not more than twenty-one years from the date of its issuance. Uh our repayment obligation under the loan agreement. Uh will be evidenced by a governmental agency bond to be issued by the, to the, excuse me, by the town. To the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority. And the bond will constitute a special revenue obligation of the town to be paid from the revenues to, to ride from the operation and use of the water system. So essentially through our water, right? Yeah, this is for the ductile. I'll forget about that, uh. People might have been over the last uh few months, and we're excited to be at this point to get this uh loan closed and for the next items as well.
Okay. Seems like a pretty straightforward point in your discussion. Is there, I have to open up for public comment, right? Either in the room or on Zoom, wanna make a public comment?
Tom, it's the question, because I guess I haven't been paying attention, like, like. Yeah, if, if you can send me, I guess, more deck, I don't understand like where it's happening and how much of like.
Do you remember the, the water um break, the water line break last year?
Yeah, so it's.
It's because of that, there's one section of ductile pipe that goes from basically, um. Our Amelia and Moffett, as, as the water comes into town from the plant up on the hill. And it's that whole section of line that goes up the hill, that's all ductile iron, it's all old enough that it's gonna start breaking. Every few months if we don't do something, so we got a huge um energy impact fund grant to. Pay for a bunch of it, and then this loan is the other part. And then, we hope to get done this fall, but it's probably not something to mention.
Thanks, man.
You just said any of that, and I'm.
Oh, do you have anything to add on this?
Just a, a thank you to Preston, Joanne, they've put out a lot of hard work, uh here this, with respect to. Getting the grant, um taking a look at the ordinance and the documents and everything looks on order.
You're here.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will close public comment and bring it up here for someone to make motion.
I move to approve emergency ordinance zero-two dash twenty twenty-four. Seconded.
Right. I think she made my best second by Paul, both cartoons.
Councilmember Scrambley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Bacon.
I'm Skyler.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Mayor Proten Meyer.
Aye. Standing honestly, thank you. That brings us to policy matters, first of which has been notice of award for the ductile iron pipe replacement project.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, so uh we issued a request for bids for this project in late May, as we're due on July thirty-one. Uh you know, R F P sub qualified and experienced contractors submitted bids to potential labor equipment materials for the ductile iron pipe replacement project for approximately twenty five per thirty feet of water line replacement. Uh in all, we received three bids, uh one from K and D Construction Incorporated of at an amount of one million one hundred fifty four thousand four hundred seventy three dollars and ninety five cents. The second one from Ridgeway Valley Enterprises Incorporated at an amount of eight hundred sixty nine thousand four hundred twenty five dollars. And the third from Williams Construction, an amount of two million four hundred five thousand four hundred and four dollars. For that, staff is recommending that uh council award project to Ridgeway Valley Enterprises Incorporated. This company is based out of Matros, has uh completed several projects for the town over the last several several years, including most recently, the uh party. John McCollum, the company president, uh has has told us that they would intend to start in the spring of twenty twenty five, just give it where we're at. Of course, at the end of the summer months now, staff appears with that. Uh the project was identified as a capital improvement project in the twenty twenty four annual budget. Estimated cost of one point two five uh million. Uh the town has secured, as you were just explaining, Mayor, a six hundred thousand dollar grant from Colorado Department of Local Affairs, D I A F program, as well as a six up, as well as a not to exceed uh base direct mode of six hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Colorado Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority to support support the project, which thanks to those organizations. Um Ridgeway Valley's bid was well below that budgeted amount. And that includes the bid alternative they submitted that calls for an upsized pipe. Um with uh an upsizing of the pipe, Ridgeway Valley's bid came in at nine hundred thirty seven thousand eight hundred twenty five. At the time of pending staff report, we were checking to see if they had accounted for um upsizing necessary valves and fittings. Didn't sound, Joanne's on the call, but I don't think it did. So that uh that amount is going to change a little bit. Understanding that it's still well below the budget amount, which is why we're recommending setting the amount to exceed about a little bit higher, like nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. Joanne, does that, does that sound right? She uh yeah, Joanne, you're muted if you're trying to talk, um but you might not be paying attention, which is fine too.
But Joanne, I have a question for you, so be there, please.
She must not be monitoring at this moment.
What's what's the upside? I mean, like, upsized pipe sounds really great, but what is the uh benefit to us? Is it just increase capacity later if we need it?
You know, I asked that question and I uh clearly didn't retain the information. Is it is it smaller?
Although you prove it, but I want an answer. Is that okay if I say that?
I don't say I. Does it meet the size of the bike upstream? It's smaller upstream.
No, the pipe comes from the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, while they would meet the pipe about halfway. Down to the area. Oh, the computer won't.
Good old computers.
Anyway, it's.
Joy, can you, can you text me the answer?
Oh, God, I don't, I didn't mean to do this, you guys.
Anyway.
We're sorry.
We can find that information.
Okay, it's it's.
Like I said, I did ask Joanne that question, I just.
She has to have had a reason or we would have taken her.
Um but we can look into it, but um you know, would appreciate just said not to exceed about. The staff will figure out what's to set up.
Real quick, anybody that you like, the people that are, well, not to discount Tony, but anybody online, have any comments? You have any comments on?
I move to issue notice of award for the ductile iron pipe replacement project to Ridgeway Valley Enterprises Inc. With a bid alternative, i.e. pipe upsizing and not to exceed nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. Also, the notice of award is contingent upon the successful finalization of the loan agreement with the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority. And also contingent upon successful grant contracting with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs.
Russ can have it. Give it to us.
I'm sure by Josie's second by yours. Roll call please.
Councilmember Scrambling.
Aye.
Kroger.
Hi.
Bacon.
I'm Skyler.
Aye.
Schofield.
Hi.
Mayor Kurt Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Great, passes unanimously. That takes us to item number of thirteen, which is discussion plus correction on notice of award for Ridgeway Turf Replacement Project. Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So um similar type deal, town issued a request for vote for this project on July sixteenth, votes were due August seventh. Uh we were looking for qualified, experienced individuals or firms to submit estimates to potential labor equipment materials to remove turf and installs their escape landscaping at the subject site. Uh beyond the ultimate deliverable of removal of turf and the installation of new landscaping. Looking for pricing on operations and maintenance manual and installation of some signage as part of the educational space demonstration area on the project. Town received, I'll join and text the answer. Town uh received one estimate from Alpine Property Services LLC in the amount of thirty six thousand six hundred sixty two dollars and ninety six cents, they're based out of Matros. And a design rendering is in the packet, but I'll try to bring it up here. This is the design rendering they submitted. Uh they did not know that that uh RFP is temporary in nature, but they now know that that will be removed.
But it looks so good.
Um as a reminder, we've uh secured a technical assistance grant of ten thousand dollars from the Storn Institute uh based on our participation in the Growing Water Smart workshop back in October. Uh to support this project, we've also secured a grant through uh the Transformative Landscape Challenge Program through Resource Central. As part of that program, uh they're gonna handle removal of about half the turf, twenty five hundred square feet. Absolutely, that's half actually. Uh they'll use sod cutters to remove two and a half inches of the turf and take care of hauling and disposal. Uh they'll also provide uh professionally designed water wise garden kits to replace the the turf uh in with planting now specific to our project. And our public works crew be tasked with removing the remaining section of turf with the equipment we have and uh removing or modifying the irrigation lines in there. This project was not identified capital improvement project, as a capital improvement project, point point forty budget. No funding is formally the near part for this project. Uh based on all that information, we're looking forward with uh direction from you all on how the town should proceed with this. Uh there's a lot more information in the in the demo, background information on our participation in that project. Uh some of the goals and action plan associated with that, so I'll uh go into detail on that, if you have any answer to your questions.
Pam, can we buy that art? Cause it really goes with turf removal.
Right.
When I saw this, I was like, oh my. We wanted, I it's just.
I think I think he has price tag on it. But I could be wrong.
Wants to buy a forest.
Actually.
I don't have it.
No.
I doubt many artists. In exchange for reducing. Maintain the escape. What was the criteria? Pardon me?
The question was, uh at the expense of saving water, it's increased maintenance cost for that. Because of the maintaining that beautiful escape rather than a piece of wall.
It's a good question. Um if it's done correctly, not necessarily, because of the weed barrier and all that.
So. Just just so it can be said, um at last weekend's rendezvous, within that space, there were three porta potties, I think, and roughly six tents. And that parking lot was used by quite a few people to overload their equipment into and their stuff into the park. I'm all for saving water. I'm all for this. This is a great deal. I just.
Maybe this is the best place, but.
Well, it's it's gonna receive a lot of foot traffic from that parking lot to the park, kids running through, so there will be.
And those are paths that are. Like that the tents and the porta potties is a whole.
Well, and so you, I mean, I assume a person you can give some some feedback since they they've got their rendering, but more compacted gravel versus like the cobble, like something that is nice to lay, something that's easy to walk.
Go by my house and see what.
There will receive a lot of foot traffic.
Yes, for sure. Which is making, yeah.
Well, I think.
But.
We can deal with that in the process.
Cool. I move to issue notice of award for the Ridgeway Turf Replacement Project to Alpine Property Services LLC with an amount not to exceed thirty seven thousand. Thank you.
I'm sure my best second by quality, all companies.
Councilmember Scrambling.
Aye.
Kroger.
Hi.
Bacon.
I'm Skyler.
I'm Schofield. Hi.
Mayor Kurt Tim Meyer.
Aye.
I know that wasn't a public hearing, so you didn't ask for any comments, but I just wanted to ask for, say a couple things.
Sure, I'm sorry, I meant to. I asked for the last one.
So I saw this in the packet, but I didn't have time to um ask Preston for more details, like to actually see the RFP. But I feel like the RFP would have been a good thing for more people to see, just to understand and.
And certainly he was a member of the.
Yeah.
Watersmart.
Exactly. And even though I love our Green Water Smart program and and um this idea, like, I mean, I almost and this is just off the top of my head, and I know it's already been approved, so it's no big deal. I almost would have said, let's just do it next year, so we can get some more um RFPs for it, because it's a really important demonstration project that just shouldn't be done by anybody. And I just looked at their website and this company isn't necessarily known for its sustainability. And they might be a really good company, so I can't say too much about them, but one of my concerns about it, which luckily, I mean, there's with this type of landscape, there's not tons of stuff growing, but um one of the concerns brought to me by at least one landscaper in the area um is soil and how good the soil is um and how that makes just such a huge difference in water efficiency and water conservation. So I hope their plan considers in the plant areas really doing something good with the soil. So it's um the kind of soil that really grows native plants well and also retains water well. So, yeah, I just hope we go forward with this, like with the M S C A R and maybe collaborating with that um since it's been approved with the uh company to make sure, you know, covers what we really want. I mean, you know, like, we don't even like using weed spray and, you know, does does that company know that? You know, like, I'm not really sure how aware they are of the policies that we have, so.
Thanks, Tony. I apologize for not asking for comment further. Um and there we still need to give staff direction on how we want to proceed. Talk about how we're gonna fund this.
It was just a.
I know, but. Sounded like you wanted a little more direction.
No, I think we, I think we.
Okay, all right.
I have an answer to best question.
Sure.
I don't think we're going to get a second line down the hill anytime soon, and I wanted to have the additional capacity in case we got a lot more.
Sweet. Upstream of problems. I like that.
Okay, uh moving on, item number fourteen, discussion and direction regarding snow removal regulations. Thanks, Tony.
Um March thirteen, uh town council meeting, council uh briefly talked about town snow removal regulations and requested a work session in the summer months to uh talk about potential changes to our laws for removal of snow and ice specifically as a place to responsibility. Um the provision we have in the code about snow and ice removal uh is clear about whose responsibility. Beyond that, it's pretty vague. So checked out uh some regs and few other communities in our region, Matros, Telluride, Ray. Um they're summarized in the, well, they're not summarized, but entirety of that's that uh code section is in the staff report. So uh I would, I would characterize the three of those as having more teeth than meat, but in the car brakes. So this is a a simple work session. I am staff looking for some direction.
I will say, if I remember correctly, the city B rate made their changes within the last couple of years, a little half. And there was quite some serious public outcry about it. Now that's always gonna happen.
Well, it's the outcry that's suddenly there, all responsible, like.
Yeah, basically. But I mean, I, in my experience, people have always been shocked to discover that almost every municipality in the country requires people to take care of snow. Um it's just the way it is. Um so. Yeah.
What's our current ability to enforce this?
To enforce uh our current regulation?
Yeah.
Um you know, the most egregious cases that that we observe are the ones that we kind of go after first, where it's like over this all time, plain basis, it doesn't feel good to say at all, but it's just what we're dealing with, honestly, and John knows it, Kevin too, actually. Uh the most egregious cases cases, I've been going out and just shoveling for them. See me out there, I think we all maybe take turns doing, uh but it's not sustainable.
So with the the specific um stipulation is that we can hire someone to go in and move there's no ground back. Process, right?
Yeah, and we have uh we have our code enforcement protocol and then um we have regs or provisions for penalty assessment, stuff like that. If that's what you're getting.
I mean, just as an anecdote, I noticed up in my River Park subdivision that people that have um snow blowers like myself or other people that have the school wheels with the blades, they just go out and do the whole neighborhood. I'll do as far as I can reach with my step. Especially since I'm bordered on both sides by empty lots and there's nobody gonna do those.
Well, and I think that's, that's to me, a very different situation. I mean, are are not like, you know, versus somebody who just never does and it's in front of their house and just kind of expects someone else to, like, that's really kind of you or really kind of Charlie. That doesn't.
Part of the solve from schools, like.
Yeah. But it just, it just doesn't absolve the property or or the tenant from the need to like do their part. And if they have an arrangement with somebody, great. But, you know, I think people like to say, well, my snow removal guy didn't show up. Well, then you need to figure out a chargeback agreement with your snow removal guy. Because if he doesn't show up, it costs you, it costs you something.
So I assume everybody, at time of what did the city Montrose, City Gray, Town Telluride's regs, what what particular set of regs or individual items in those regs did you want?
I like the time limit. I think the the charging of the fees is interesting, cause it's mostly just a bunch of words. There's no real clear, it's gonna cost you this much. Uh the only one who did that, I think, was uh Telluride, it sounded like you had to pay some fees plus a hundred dollar fine.
Yeah.
But he gave you something that the is concrete that you know you have to pay at a minimum. And then a a time limit on getting it done. And then my other question, similar to Terry's started off, is who's gonna enforce it?
And what's 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 the magnitude of the problem as it stands?
I think, I think we have some. Well, Christian alluded to this earlier. I think we have some concerns of ADA and accessibility and some like openness from town not enforcing this. You know, when it comes to people being accessible, um so I think we can say like, well, how are we gonna enforce it? But.
It's always this.
It's always.
And the the other thing I would add is, a lot of it comes from before we had the downtown grant project, you had curbs. Before we had the downtown ramp project, you had curbs got in sidewalks everywhere. It wasn't as much of a problem already, it's also not busy, I mean, a lot of this has come up since the whole ramp project happened. And now we've got sidewalks on both sides of the street in areas where it didn't used to be. And dropping yards, be like, wait a minute, now I have to shovel all this, especially if they're in the corner of a big lot. You know, it, but it's, it's something that we need to deal with, because I, I walk around town a lot and I'm always surprised how. Little, how few people actually shovel, actually shovel.
I find it, I find it really interesting, um and maybe it's just like the speed of how things work, basically, nothing can be done for forty eight hours. You know, in all of these, it's like, you get twenty four hours and then we post a notice and then you get twenty four hours. And it would be interesting, and I don't know where we would find this, but if anybody done some sort of like, that's your. That's your like first or second offense level, and by third offense, you just, somebody does go and do it and you get charged for it. Like, if you're just not doing it, we know it, you know, you've already had an issue in the last couple of years. Like, you need to figure your stuff out. You know, like, I'm all about, like, let's give you some notice, I mean, give him seventy two hours the first time, like, hey. Take care of it, does that make sense? And then more of like, if this is a. A pre special problem, now you just owe us, it just needs to get done.
That's more or less our process now. Play based, when we get a complaint about something, uh you know, my Jill goes and talks to them and says, let's get this done. And we do, you know, we don't save the seventy two hour deal, we say, let's get this done. And ninety nine point four percent of the time, it gets done in a reasonable amount of time. You know, and it doesn't feel cool to say more teeth. Rags, is it gonna, is it going to change what we have staff capacity wise and resource wise? Still going to be uh relying on folks to call in and say, hey, so and so. Just got four inches on that sidewalk. Do about it. New regs, you know, so that's something to think about, too.
Well, I guess the other thing is, who's actually gonna take care of those ADAs if it's, if it's a commercial lot, let's say. Or or the town park. Say you're coming from Hartwell Park, crossing over to Mountain Market, Market, and there's no uh. The the ADAs are full of snow, is town, town supposed to take care of that?
The ramps, yeah.
Yeah, we largely do, um. Like the mountain market ones have given a pretty good example, I mean, if that's their responsibility to to clear that sidewalk, they often don't. And um well, I don't wanna pick on them and say they often don't, but I don't think they always do. Uh and, you know, you know, Robbie or Bobby or someone else will swing by with with the bobcat and clear it off, right?
And so that's town time, and like, we're, we're doing this already. And so I liked, was it Telluride had the twenty five dollar administrative charge? Because if we're going to bill these folks, if staff is spending time that they shouldn't be spending during town property. Making sure that sidewalks that should be maintained by a business owner are being maintained. Just like if we're doing work for a preliminary plat and we charge back work done that way on engineering. It's the same sort of deal, you didn't take care of your sidewalks.
I do, oh, sorry, go ahead, I I really like um like Russ, section B of the town of Telluride. And the city of Yre, I really like their. E, F, and G. Um those are essentially saying, any costs recovered for work completed by the city, she'll go to the property owner. Like, if town spends their time doing it, you're paying town.
Yeah.
Yeah, if uh, but I feel like section F is like. Very apparent and any um. Uh any. If anyone gets hurt on these, the property owner is liable.
And do you think we have to? To tolerate the case for. Cut, but I, I think we have to codify the, the kind of. Warning bit, because we do have limited staff capacities, and so, you know, it's, it has to be evenly applied. If that makes sense, like the, how, how do we escalate to the point? Because it does take time to bill for it.
Yeah.
It takes longer to go for it than it takes them to clear the sidewalk, hundred percent, but it's the principle of the matter and and making sure that our community is accessible to all. Um and so I would say we need an intermediate level between what's here, so we don't get accused of. In unevenly applying things.
I'm curious, oh, was that second half of paragraph G from the city of Yre even legal, saying that that they should be. Liable for the violation?
Yeah, that's pretty standard, it's, I mean, I see it uh with sidewalk repairs. Um and if there's a slip and fall incident, that the homeowner can be held civil. Same concept, but if I.
Well, I think no matter what we do, we need to, we we need to start by being really clear in communicating. With everyone around town, but specifically the downtown businesses, about saying, hey. We we're, we're gonna start enforcing this, you need to remove your, you need to do it, you need to do as info out as you can. If you don't, we're gonna hire somebody to do it. And just say, that's the way it works, every municipality, um not being the bad guys, this is just. You need to go anywhere on this note, this is.
In addition to the stick, maybe it's not really a carrot, but I wonder if part of the information campaign. For the town could be to provide on the website or otherwise on this, contractors that we know that could be hired to do the work.
That sounds like a chamber project.
Well, now something, um you know, talking about what we've been talking about before. Neighborhoods have people with a snow blower that goes around and does everybody's and it's. By the goodness of the heart, well, downtown, I know Sherbino had a snow blower for a while and we. Talked to neighboring businesses and and people who wanted to be involved, we would snow blow in front of theirs. And I think they able to contribute a little money, so that can be part of the communication as well, especially downtown, get together with your neighbors. Find a solution so that, you know, everybody's getting it done. Cause otherwise, we're gonna have to hire somebody. I guess. The question still remains, do we, you know, if if enforcement's gonna be an issue no matter what. Do we feel like we need to put more, or quote teeth in our code?
Yeah.
And if we do. Somebody throw out some specific. I mean, I know you already did, um there are infraction, first is a warning, second.
Yeah, like.
Then by the third, that's when the money dollars start flying.
I think that was second.
Yeah, like, it's your second, you got, you got a free pass, because if you figure. It's, we live in Colorado, we know we're gonna get snowstorms. We need, and and when we originally brought this up, it's something that needed to be discussed, we said we wanted to get to it before winter, so that we had time to message. So people have time to find somebody reliable to do this. And so. And again, and, yeah, and again, I think it goes back to making sure that our community is accessible to everybody.
And I think that. Oh, no, I lost it, I'm so sorry.
It happens at this time.
Yeah, uh, oh, messaging, there it is, I found it. Um maybe starting like the campaign in the plane dealer, like, hey, winter's coming. Changes to the snow removals coming, or just a reminder, it is your.
Well, because like, it's your responsibility cleaning your sidewalks. And part of this is, the messaging is, we actually haven't changed the regs, we're just now adding the enforcement. Your, your responsibility, the regulations are changing, but your responsibilities have not changed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Someone hasn't been reading one ads in the.
I was gonna say.
I don't have sidewalks. I can't read. Shovels and bats.
Right, well, and that's the point, too, so we say, okay, well, second, first time's awareness, second time is enforcement and billing, but do we actually have the staff time? To then take ownership of that every time? That's what you said, like, with giving staff resources, so I worry about us being like, hey, once, first time's awareness, second time we're charging, we're doing it.
Do we have time to do it for everyone who decides? Like, I, I'm just.
Second or third, no matter which time it is, at some point, a lot of people decide, man, it's worth the twenty five bucks to have the town.
Then Preston comes back to us and we raise the rate, like, that's, that's the thing, the, the idea is. Well. The idea is that it has to hurt enough, it has to be cheaper to just have someone come and do it. Right, we don't, we shouldn't be fighting them and charging it back and spending time. I think it was Telluride that had the twenty five dollar fee on top of whatever time, like. Trying to make sure you're accounting for that, because the, the job is like, this is your responsibility.
So just, uh, is there interest in for next meeting drafting an ordinance to change the regs based on a little bit of. Yeah, not a little bit, uh, trying to incorporate what we've heard here to give a go, putting more teeth to the regs. Just give it, miss the mark, miss the mark, it provides some direction, it can still be a good done first reading, modify it for second reading, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how I make, that would be great.
And Polly, I was totally just joking, but uh. We can even, I mean, we've upped the communication about. Shoveling sidewalks and stuff in those ads.
Yeah.
Um, um, October, actually not October, November through February, it's like right up the top of the chat. Or we could even, let's say even more standalone ads, stuff like that.
Just like, making sure people know it's their part of living in a community to shovel their.
I would say you could also print out a one pager that we distribute. Kind of door to door.
Maybe with a list of recommended contractors. Yeah, we.
I'm not gonna say we share them down.
We have a brochure, you know, brochure that we put out.
Yeah.
Okay, we have what we need.
Good. Thank you. Adding number fifteen, discussion and action on change to IT services.
Anne, you wanna present this one?
Um, sure. But I can tell you what's happening.
Um, I'll just cover it, I just know Anne is really excited about.
Yeah, I am.
Since, since Iron Edge has taken over as the IT administrator at the level of customer service. That that we've received and experienced has been uh very subpar, gone automatically. Response times length and some calls for service have gone days without uh being addressed or even confirmation responses being received. I've experienced that myself, um. The reduction in customer service has impeded the ability of some folks to even do their job on a day to day basis. About authority and the utility of doing our role and. Them, her role, I mean, when things go down, when you step restored and lack of customer services, it's not helping that. So um that's a really abbreviated version of what we're dealing with. But given all that, we feel like the time's come to find a new IT administrator as soon as possible, so we're seeking authorization to. Terminate the contract with Iron Edge and enter into a contract with Bell Tech Pros, Bell Tech Pros is a Montrose. I think there's some information to staff.
Right.
Um about uh how how we've uh. Solicited uh both from them, uh their monthly premium would be a little bit higher and nominally higher than what Iron Edge. Uh is charging for us now, the level of customer service uh would be substantially better, given that they have technicians. That we, we have worked with before in Montrose and then they even have pros. Town, I'm not quite sure where it's somewhere.
In, in town.
In town, so uh.
Seems like a no brainer to me, especially with that.
I agree.
Cost, we should have got a white glove service. I move to authorize staff to expend budget funds, terminate the contract with Iron Edge, to enter the contract with Bell Tech Pros. Second, right, she made by the boys this time.
Councilmembers Graham.
Hi.
Bacon.
I'm.
Skyler.
I'm.
Schofield.
Hi.
Mayor for Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Thank you. Passes unanimously, I'd number sixteen, ratification, the next year of just. Letters of support, first one's letter of support for habitat remain. Application for single family, single family owner, entrepreneur, rehab, help program. Through the Department of Local Affairs, which I sent last month, maybe more earlier this month, but no, it was last. Any questions about that?
That's great.
Looks good, I'm gonna ratify it.
Second.
All right, move, motion made by Terry, seconded by Polly, roll call please.
Councilmembers Graham.
I.
Kroger.
Hi.
Bacon.
I'm Skylar.
I'm.
Schofield.
I'm.
Mayor for Tim Meyer.
Hi.
They passed unanimously, the second one is a letter on behalf of Egleon Sheepart Partners to apply for energy efficiency and conservation law. Grant program, grant for a shared um. Administrator with region climate action development director, um any questions about that one?
Cool.
Oh, that's great.
That's, that's cool.
I move to, I move to approve this.
We're losing all our words.
Slowly melting, is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion made by Polly, seconded by.
Almost there, yes.
Roll call please.
Councilmembers Graham.
I.
Kroger.
Hi.
Bacon.
I.
Skylar.
I.
Schofield.
Hi.
Mayor for Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Right, that passes unanimously as well, number eighteen is confirmation or amendment of emergency restrictions from Gabe by the challenger. This the.
Yeah.
Fire ban stage one.
Stage one. Which almost seems interesting.
So much water, yeah.
But uh Yre County is still on stage one. There's a fire not too far away. Right, yeah, it can base size to keep it.
Any questions about this one? Seems like anybody wanna amend it or change it?
Is the intent that we'll stay at stage one until uh the county rescends theirs?
To be fair, the bucktail fire is eighty three percent contained, they issued their final report yesterday.
Uh to answer your question, Russ, that's traditionally what we've always done, so some answer would be yes, but we can go either way.
Yeah, I mean, at the time we approved this, it was, it was uh, it was obvious we needed to do it, at this time, it's like, eh.
Right.
We're soaking my.
If if the county does not rescind it, we could revisit it next month. Well, uh, I think what we've done in the past is, uh, as soon as Beverly relied on the county to fasten, you know, just the area and sheriff's role to, to. Name those decisions based on what we do, and then, like, I have the ability to to rescind restrictions. Providing you've all ratified it to your next meeting, so, you know, say tomorrow, but it's not going to be tomorrow, but. Early next week, they all meet, decide that they're no longer, isn't it, we can follow suit.
Okay.
I think that's good.
That's correct.
So does that mean that we need to, though, at this meeting, ratify your decision from before, so that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We have to.
Okay.
And given that it has dried out. We short term forecast is meant to stay dry, so I, I think it's okay to stay.
Yeah. I move to ratify the inaction of the town waiting stage one fire.
There you go.
Terry got it, okay. Motion by that, seconded by Terry, uh, roll call please.
Councilmembers Graham. Bacon.
I.
Skylar.
I.
Schofield.
Hi.
Mayor for Tim Meyer.
Hi.
Thank you, passes unanimously, that takes us to our written and verbal reports, uh updated schedule for budget.
Uh only change was to the budget retreat, um, which is Hawaii this year.
Keep going.
October twelve, that date does not. October twelfth. That date does not work for someone.
October twelfth?
October twelfth, that's a Saturday.
Okay.
It, it works, and let's be clear, work is last month for everybody. But now someone's saying that someone was on a Zoom call, didn't notice it was changed, made plans to be out of town, thinking I'd be back in time. Yeah, like, like in the fall, it's still looking.
Okay, so when are we doing this? Cause Polly had a wedding the next weekend.
Nineteenth of October, too.
Great, well heard.
Oh, that's good for me.
Oh, we're, Jane, we're talking about different dates, we're talking.
Um.
Preston did emphasize that he wants Sunday instead of Saturday, so, in a previous private conversation.
During football time, right?
Football Sunday, specifically the Dallas Cowboys.
So, so either Terry can't be there, would the twenty-sixth be too late? I previously threw a pencil, I did it on my long weekend, but I, things already impeded my long weekend, so I could do that, too.
Twenty-sixth is fine with me.
Rather not do that.
Okay.
That's actually a real reason, so.
That's a real reason.
That's a real reason. What are your plans?
I was gonna be out of town for two weeks. So I plan to be back on the nineteenth, when it was in the last package, it was the day, I didn't hear the discussion that you changed it to the twelfth. I'm just telling the And, and the, the alternative is I can study up, give you my notes and do whatever I can not be present at it, give you input. Let me ask you, does the budget information get sent out before the retreat? I'm trying to remember the process or
Excuse me, we try to get out, like, packet, um, I think, oh, it must be years. It's being held on a Saturday, we've been trying to get it to all that Tuesday or Wednesday.
Well, we have a council meeting now for the Wednesday before the draft.
That's true.
Have to get it out.
I know it's not your favorite idea, but what about the twentieth?
It's on my week.
I'm, I'm out of town still.
Oh, yeah, you're out of town, sorry.
Yes. Most plain, I don't fly until like eight, eight, eighteen that night.
I'm not waiting.
And we can't go to the fifth, cause Terry's already gone and we can't get them. You can't do it.
I'm willing to do over and mail it in. Without being there, it's too difficult. But I don't wanna change my plans. Again, based on the information ahead of time.
I mean, my only other thought was breaking it into two pieces and doing two evenings, but if you're gone for two weeks and you're gone for a week, that doesn't really like solve anything. Yeah.
I've got five days.
Sounds like we should just stay with the twelve. So we're gonna think.
No, I can't, I can't do an evening, a week, the twenty-first, that's conferences, I would die.
I'll save it for twelve.
Cause you're not gonna do Zoom during this thing.
We are, I mean, we do Zoom.
You can Zoom in from your campsite.
Also, it's just that it's the weekend.
You're camping, what is the week versus the weekend?
It's when people show up to come back. Retired.
Oh, no, terrible inconvenience for your camping trip, that you did it, listen.
My one freaking vacation.
My good sir. Um, so Mayor, what's our call here, please?
Are we doing our community, we're doing the twelfth and Terry's aiming. Think we do the twelfth, we give Terry a missing hard. Okay. Takes us to the manager's report.
I, uh,
Senior planner.
Senior planner, we hired Angela Kim to, to fill that role her first day, so this next Tuesday, we're really excited.
She's great.
Orientation schedule lined out for her. TJ is actually coming out for the next planning commission meeting, so on the twenty-seventh, we'll have him here to powwow with Angela. Yeah, we're really excited. Y'all have any other questions on anything? So I don't have to be.
Like you said, did you watch the ad?
I didn't watch the ad, but I'm gonna watch, my, my plan was to watch it tomorrow.
Nope, this looks good.
The new parking lot looks good, but I understand there's still some vinyl to be done on that.
There's some little ins and outs and then some erosion at the at the entrance there, but that's I think largely due to some of the heavy rains recently.
And I, I tried to ask, I pray you, remember we did it, um, what is the plan for the, um, the non-gravel area that's been destroyed, a part that's just dirt for the west side of the parking lot?
To the west side of the parking.
Around the west edge of the new parking lot of the Atlanta.
Yeah, yeah. We put in, we put in railroad ties there, it's still any of that. But on the other side, I have to look and see what the.
Yeah, I was just curious what, whether that was gonna be zirisked or you know, I noticed when they were excavated, it was curious.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to look and see what that calls for.
Okay.
Yeah, we put those railroad ties to help with that folks, like, this one, just like, as far as they want.
Yeah.
Um, one thing I'll mention, and, uh, Beth, thanks for already telling me to register, generally I'll be registered, but the next, um, District Ten meeting is being held here in Ridgeway, see, we're doing it in the Decker Room, um, September twenty-third. It would be great to have everyone available for that, and actually, if you just raise your hand now, like.
What time for that again?
Probably five to.
It'll be like social.
Social hour starts at five and like the program starts at six.
September.
Yeah, I, I can do that.
Russ is out, is he?
Yeah, I can do it.
Terry, are you camping?
We'll keep it up.
Uh, it starts at five, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, seven, eight, seven, three.
You know, unless you guys have any questions, I'll.
My joke was good, I am just gonna say my.
I like it, I like it, I like that. I'm going to say my joke was good.
Last night, the Hughes Group at our meeting, uh, had, with a, we have a series of mini grants, engaged the business group roughly to the tune of about a thousand dollars to use toward the Ridgeway marketing on AVNF Radio.
Oh, good.
For a series of advertisements, so you'll be agree not, and if you listen to KNF, which is formal. Uh, yeah, that, that was kind of neat. Great, could use your little mini grant, so just wanted to sparkle with that.
Okay. Question.
They, our hours, you're gonna ask me. When they need staff, maybe this is a question. Can they use alcohol in their?
Yes.
It's part of the.
And I, I think, um, you can book it on a login at the, at the website, do the but you can also do it on the, on the, uh, real. Um, just wanted to see if, uh, anybody has the community reports.
Quick one on the sustainability version, what they held is and writing, driving. I was out of town, so I didn't. But I missed it, so, but I heard it was successful.
Yep, I think a lot of us were. I can't think of anything else. Anybody have anything else? It's almost ten o'clock, are we done? Everybody have anything else? If not, we are adjourned.
Well, the joke.
If, if I say it's good, does that mean I can get out of here?
Did you notice I said the joke was good? I'm always the one who groans.
I was really happy with that. Actually, I actually didn't, I actually did like it, but it's like, I'm gonna agree to anything right now.
I will agree to anything.
Now I have to go.